This is for the City Council Public Hearing will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselor's Gadeen?
Here.
Joseph Camara?
Stephen Camara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Oliver B. LeBeau?
Here.
Long?
Yep.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Alvarez?
Here.
President Ponti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting, allow any person to make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to acknowledge impermissible. First item before this public hearing is a joint pole relocation. Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Inc. for one jointly owned pole location as follow. On Dundee Street, National Grid requests to relocate pole to approximately 20 feet south of its current location on Dundee Street with anchor and guy wire in accordance with the plan indicated on our agenda on August 15, 2018. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So may.
Motion to open hearings made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Any opponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Is a motion to close the hearing? Motion to close the hearings made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on our public hearing is a secondhand article store. Joseph McFadden doing business as One Place Shop at 87 Rockland Street, Fall River, for permission to operate and maintain a secondhand article store located at 156 Tripp Street, Fall River, used for video games, toys, clothes to be sold. Is there a motion to open?
Motion.
Motion to open hearings made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Any opponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Is a motion to close the hearing? Motion to close the hearings made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on our public hearing is a secondhand article store. Joseph McFadden doing business as One Place Shop at 87 Rockland Street, Fall River, for permission to operate and maintain a secondhand article store located at 156 Tripp Street, Fall River, used for video games, toys, clothes to be sold. Is there a motion to open?
Motion.
Motion to open hearings made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on our public hearing is a secondhand article store. Joseph McFadden doing business as One Place Shop at 87 Rockland Street, Fall River, for permission to operate and maintain a secondhand article store located at 156 Tripp Street, Fall River, used for video games, toys, clothes to be sold. Is there a motion to open?
Motion.
Motion to open hearings made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Come on down. Proponent. Are you a proponent or opponent? Are you opposed to it?
I'm against it.
You're against it. We're not calling opponents yet. Just proponents. People who are in favor. Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Any opponents wishing to speak on this item?
No.
Now you can come up.
(laughing).
Yeah, you can have a seat. Just state your name and have a seat right there, right before the council, and just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Paul Bassett. I'm against it.
If you can speak into the microphone, sir, so we can hear you.
Is it on?
Uh...
No, I don't think so.
There's a switch that goes up toward you.
Hello?
There you go. Loud and clear.
All right. On April 1, I came in, made a complaint to City Hall. I had it addressed to every single city council members. Back on December 23, my daughter was at the flea market, and there's four people that live upstairs. One of them was looking at my daughter when she was going to bathroom. I called the cops. Cops made a report. They stated that the four people living up there had 30 days to get out. Well, that didn't happen. Called again, then they were told that they had 10 days to leave. That didn't happen. As of today, they're still there. There's at least two of them still living there. So I wrote that letter. I called Saturday, this Saturday. Their permit ran out on April 30. I spoke to Officer Castillo, explained to him that they have no permit, they're expired, and he went in there, spoke to them. They couldn't find the permit, and he said, "If we find it, we'll let you know." So that's kind of why I'm here. This has been dragging on for a long time. You know, it's supposed to be a flea market. They do a lot of wrong things. They open when they want to. They take ceiling lights down. They put up their own lights. You know, they don't get permits. Nothing like that ever happens. So it's just crazy. You know, they open when they want to. It's supposed to be a weekend. If they want to open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they'll do it. You know, it's just, it's been going on for a long time. I'm sick and tired of it, and my main reason is I don't want anybody else to go into a bathroom and be looked down on, like my daughter happened. That's why I'm here. That's why I want it stopped.
Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LeBeau.
So I've spoken to Mr. Bassett and his wife half a dozen times, I'd say, over the last few weeks since they wrote the letter.
I appreciate that.
And this was on our agenda as a communication, which counselors had mentioned. We sent it to committee, Public Safety Committee. Counselor Kilby had scheduled the meeting, but then in speaking with the chief, there is some, there's an active investigation and charges filed, I believe.
Yes.
So it wasn't going, the chief didn't want it discussed publicly at the table. That was just for this past Tuesday, and the actual license itself is in front of us now, so that's where we're at.
Thank you.
So would you, not to be repetitive, but Pam did enlighten me to the situation after receiving a number of calls. I personally spoke to the police chief. He said someone was criminally charged. The license was not approved, and it would have been a futile, basically a futile effort to have the meeting because you really can't comment on anything at this time due to the criminal charges. So we're in a kind of a holding pattern right now. But I hope you made whole, and it's just a terrible thing that could happen to someone's daughter. I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Camara, do you raise your hand?
I know, I concur that this is a matter that needs to be resolved as quickly as possible.
I agree.
I don't understand, and you can clarify for me, this, they basically have a flea market in a residential property?
No, it's a flea market, but there's a set of stairs, and there's a, I don't know how big it is, maybe a 20 by 20 area. You can actually get to it from the stairs. There's three entrances to the flea market. It's supposed to be at one level, but there's stairs that go up, and that's where they've been living. They've been living there for five years, the whole time.
So they've got a business and a residence?
Well, yeah, they are. They get money for both, for the flea market and for living there.
But they're renting. They don't own the property.
No, no, they're renting it. But they also get money for people living there, too, so they're collecting money for rent as well.
It seems like it's very complex issues going on here, and I don't understand, is the building zoned commercially? I don't know if you know that.
I don't think so. I mean, it's supposed to be a flea market. It's supposed to be one level. That's what I was explained.
Madam Clerk, do you have any information on whether or not this parcel is zoned commercially? Or is it...
I would say yes, Counselor. There wasn't a license at that location, which just expired on April 30.
Expired, right. Now, why is the business still operating if they have no license?
I don't think that's a question he would have the answer to, Counselor.
No, none of us have the answer.
I don't think so.
I called Saturday, and they couldn't do nothing because, like he said, the cops explained that he doesn't have the City Hall files. He doesn't have the files on that.
You can refer this to committee and ask the billing inspector to come down. I'm sure Mr...
It's already in committee, isn't it?
Okay, well, then whoever is, whoever is, it's referred where exactly?
To refer it to Public Safety.
Okay, so at that point, when the chairman of the committee calls a meeting, he can invite the city inspector down.
But I yield to, just to clarify what, or to have the council chair of that committee reiterate what he just said. So I yield to Counselor Kilby.
Sure. I'll stay in communication with the police chief with regard to this, and I think you also said he received a 30-day notice.
Yeah.
So that's a notice to evict?
Yes, a notice to evict, and then a 10-day notice because he didn't listen to the cop. And then they continued to live there. Their permit expired April 30, and then they're still running a business for, you know, two extra weekends. It's just, I'm dumbfounded how they can just keep doing what they do, and nothing happens. It's just, I'm dumbfounded. I really am.
I would like to interject for a moment and remind the council that there was a communication that he has submitted over to the council that was referred to Public Safety. However, before this council tonight, item 27 on our agenda is for us to review or deny or accept this license for our place shop located at 156 Tripp Street. So at that point, when that item comes before us, it's within the council's purview to do what they want. I would suggest referring this to the Committee on Regulations at that time. That committee would be able to, the chair of that committee would be able to invite the inspector down and decide whether or not this license could or should not be granted at that time.
I think that's a wonderful idea, Ms. Gadeen, Mr. Chairman, in Regulations, I believe.
That would be me. Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LeBeau, you yield, or are you also?
I yield.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, sorry. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier, hold on one second.
He always forgets the little guy.
I didn't see your hand raised.
You know, years ago, that particular building, they used to have multiple guys with licenses. Were you there that long when that was? No. Well, you know, if the problem's that bad, I don't know why they just didn't, they got no license now, am I right?
Right.
And tonight, you're absolutely right. Don't issue no license, and send the billing inspector there to check it out, give him a cease and desist, and shut it down. That's what we ought to do. I mean, this poor guy, he has enough problems. You don't have a license. That's what we ought to do, and he shouldn't be open this weekend at all. And if the police department, I'm not sure, send them a letter saying, "Hey, he's got no license, and he can't operate." And that's the way it should be done until we square this away. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other opponents wishing to speak on this item? Come on down.
Right across that row there, sir.
You state your name and address for the record, please.
Robert W. Janelle, 281 London Street, Fall River, Mass.
Joseph McFadden, 87 Rockland Street, Fall River, Mass.
Ruben de Sensu, Jr., 401 Buppington Street, Fall River, Mass.
Just make sure your mic switch is facing... Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
The floor is yours.
This is Joe McFadden. I currently have a license under my name, and he's taking over. And Paul, that was just up there. The accusation...
Quite a clarification. Are you presenting as a proponent, you support?
No, I'm for.
Your for this license.
Yeah.
Okay, so just for the record, I called all opponents. But before we continue, I'll let you stay at the table. Is there any other proponents wishing to speak on this? Hearing none. And to correct the record, all opponents have been called proponents. I'm going to hear proponents once again. You can continue.
Well, it was, you know, the license was valid, and it's in my name, so when that question was asked, I didn't have to come up and say a proponent. It was just a matter of...
No, that's fine. It's all set. You can speak as a proponent.
But it's Paul Bassett. He currently has three children, four children, and he was at the flea market. I'd say, you know, from month to month, he's quit, he come back. The incident about his daughter being looked at, there's a floor upstairs, one, two rooms upstairs, and they've never been, somebody lived in it probably about 12 years ago. I have someone that lived there for the year who does firework. Used to do the firework on the mill, right, on the King Philip Mill. Done that probably for eight years. He had, he was a homeless person that is very savvy about life and why, you know, he just wants, he doesn't mind living in a one-room shack, and that's the person living there. Anyone else that was living there was a temporary basis, a homeless person, right? There was one kid that came, right, that was living there, came to me, and his stepfather was beating him up. So he came to me, his mother came to me, he was friends with somebody at the flea market, so yes, he stood there. The incident about his daughter being saw, the, nothing, nothing in that building is really built, I mean, compared, what do you say, solid, like floors, everything, everything is open, space, doors, wall, floor, everything. The cops came on that. They found nothing. They found nothing, and they found nothing to go on with. This guy, right, is in his stay there, if he'd miss a week, he didn't want to pay, right? So he was disgruntled about that. This is Joe McFadden. He had words with him about what he's going to do there, what he's not going to do there, and it's just a, it's just one of those, when they say there was no license currently, the license is in my name, and just about every year, when I apply, reapply for the license, it does have a time lapse between before, before May 1, where it comes to the council like this here, after. But the license is still active, and he's saying that there was no license.
No, nobody indicated that there wasn't a license before us. This is before the City Council tonight. It's item 27 on our agenda, item 27 on our agenda, and the council will, at that point, hear it as we do every public hearing, so just wanted to correct the record. You can continue.
Because, and it's just, it's like a retaliatory thing with him and the family. There was not, like I said, there was nothing founded then. Cops have come. He's told them that we had stolen objects in there, right? He's done that. Cops have come. Last week, the cop come, and we showed paperwork telling that we were legal, and he continues to say that we weren't legal. And I don't know, if you have any questions to that, and I can fill in one by one, whatever. This is one person that just stands out, that, I don't want to put him down, but I don't want to put him in the same seat as me, because he's just got an issue for him mostly, and complaint, and he told us that he would shut us down, he would, his daughter even called us and these people here, called them, and told them that he was going to, if he takes it over, if Joe takes it over, he's going to make trouble for him, he's going to put him in jail, because it's, you know, because he's going to take over. He had no problems with me. All of a sudden, his problems with Joe. But again, with his daughter, it's just an ongoing thing. Nothing was founded, and it was just retaliatory for his daughter and the one that he accused of seeing, looking, looking down through the floor at him. I mean, there were people in that boat room, upstairs and downstairs, that he's talking about, looking down. There are two or three people in there at the same time. Because it was a toilet, right, because it was a bathroom, he said that he, he should, could possibly do that while his daughter is going in there, not while she's in there. If she went in there, because she does go to the bathroom, we have two toilets, and when she does go in that bathroom, he could be looking at. Never proven, never done, with the time of the accusation, he said that, you know, just what he told these people, but there was no, it was only an accusation between him and her, because there were other people in the exact same, when I say toilet, I mean, it's not a, it's not a, if you saw her in there, I mean, you'd see it's a single unit, and there's been repairs on the floor, the wall, the ceilings, everything. And in doing so, she is like a playmate of the guy, believe it or not. She was 16, 17, and the guy was 21, and he's, he was a kid that was there, and he supposedly admitted, he says, "Well, he says, 'I was looking down it because I heard you guys banging down it.'"
All right, thank you very much. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LeBeau?
To the clerk. He had mentioned something about a time lapse. The license is currently expired?
Expired.
So they're not supposed to be operating at all until it gets renewed by the council?
Correct.
So if this gets sent to Regulations tonight, there's no flea market coming up this weekend or until that Regulations hearing, correct?
And for clarification, the license that exists is under Mr. Janelle's name. This is a new application for this other party.
Okay, but Mr. Janelle's license is expired?
It's expired.
So nobody has any right to be running anything right now?
Exactly.
Okay. And the other question I have is, you said no one's lived there for 12 years upstairs?
No, there's one person that lives at Security. He used to do the Kilburn, Kilburn Mills, right? At night, we used to go 5 to, no, she, 9 to 5 in the morning, and he needed a place to stay. He was homeless, has no car, has no family, and that's where, and that...
Is it apartment upstairs?
No. Well, it's apartment, it's two rooms. There's no water, there's no running water, there's no toilet, no running, no kitchen. There's nothing in there.
So the communication that I had gotten from the building...
Point of order, that just sounds like a health violation.
The communication that I received from the building inspector is that he's been over this several times, and that no one is supposed to be living upstairs, and that he's gone there, I'm not sure which one of you gentlemen he spoke to, but he's been denied access to upstairs, so he can't, he's not been allowed to see what's going on upstairs. No one is supposed to be upstairs living at all.
Upstairs is like, we got cameras and...
I understand that, but nobody is supposed to be living upstairs. And then you kind of mentioned another handful of people, that maybe there was a homeless person at one time, or someone that didn't have a place to stay, and you've allowed them to stay there? No one is supposed to be staying upstairs?
I've never denied it. I was here, I was here probably seven years ago, probably six, seven years ago, and neighbors, right, didn't want anybody in their, in their yard or anything like that. And at that time, right, it was openly said by me that there was a homeless guy living there that was at Security.
Okay, but there's not supposed to be anybody living upstairs?
Well, like I said, if you call living there, you know, no water, no toilet...
If I may interject, if I may interject for a moment, this is an item that needs to be referred to the Committee on Regulations.
But in the meantime, there is no, nobody has a right to be operating this?
That is, that is correct, and I'm sure that the city administration, the city administrators here, those individuals who report to her, I'm sure she'll pass any kind of messages along if this is an operation right now. In addition to that, this further debate and discussion needs to be before the Regulations Committee. The chair of the committee's here tonight. I'm sure he'll have a meeting scheduled as soon as possible, but I'll, I don't think it's healthy to have this debate.
I have one question.
Sure.
Does this only operate on the weekends or during the week as well?
Right now, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday, technically.
Right, but you understand right now it can't be operating at all until this...
Like I said, I'm going to try, I'm going to take over the license, I'm just going to shut it down. I'm not going to be able to get it...
You're not going to shut it down because of him?
Yeah, but I got two weeks on my...
We will allow, excuse me, guys, please. We will allow the opportunity before the Regulations Committee, and we'll deal with it at that point. We have, we are in a public hearing.
I don't want my license...
We are, excuse me, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, point of information.
Very quickly.
The gentleman, if the gentleman is withdrawing his application, then this is moot. It would not be referred to any committee. I think he just said that on the record, that he's withdrawing his application. So if, Madam Clerk, can the applicant withdraw his application at this time?
Certainly. And the item's before you, it's item number 27, so when it comes to that item, you can grant it, leave to withdraw?
No, he just withdrew the applicant. He just stated...
Yes, but we still need to act on the item, Counselor.
Add on the order, you can grant it.
We can accept his withdrawal of his, of his intent to apply.
We can. Do whatever we want.
The license...
We can also refer it to Regulations for the individuals to have a proper hearing as well, if that's what needs to happen.
Yes.
Which I think would only be fair.
I think that's premature to say it's referred to Regulations. The matter is already referred to Public Safety.
I think you're getting confused, Counselor. I'm going to say this one more time. So we have a communication that came down from the individual who was here before. That item was referred to, the communication, the letter that was received by the City Council President, the city clerk, was put on our agenda to be referred to Public Safety for a Public Safety reason. We have an item on our agenda tonight, item number 27, where this City Council is going to need to act on the license, whether we reject it, approve it, give it leave to withdraw, we need to act on that item. At that point, we can refer item 27 to Regulations if we want, so both parties can have their day before that committee and speak further. You're talking about two separate items, even though they're one item.
I understand.
Mr. President, point of order.
I understand, Mr. President.
We're in the middle, point of order.
I think I had a point of order.
Counselor in seat one? Thank you.
I had a point of order prior to this one.
Counselor in seat one? We're, it is amazing. We're in public hearing. We're supposed to be listening to people that are in favor or opposed. Correct. We're having a full-out conversation about the Board of Health and whether or not a flea market's going to be open. Can we just listen to what the reasons are for the flea market granting the license to the individuals and those who do not want it to be granted, why, and then close the public hearing and have the full discussion? Thank you. I agree. Anything further?
I'll need to close.
Motion to close the, you have any other comments, sir?
Yes, I do.
If you can conclude those, please.
Licenses, according to date, when the license is up for renewal, and I go down for renewal, or the renewal is coming, it does come back, and many times, a week or two after. If there's a City Council meeting that's canceled sometimes, or whatever it be, whatever it be, the license is still in effect. That's what I'm told, because May 1 is supposed to be the end.
We have, we have this item before us to speak about a public hearing with respect to permission to operate and maintain a secondhand store. That's what we're going to speak to. We're not going to get into the policy and procedure of licensing. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LeBeau?
Did you have anything you wanted to answer?
Sir?
What?
Does this individual, would you like to add anything?
The only thing I can add to this right now is we have gone through a lot of extensive repairs during those last six years. When former chairperson Linda Pereira, I was in her presence, and I've even invited Mr. Rigo, who was formerly among you, to look at it. Pat Casey did come, and she loved the place, how we went through great lengths to make a lot of improvements. We had the place inspected repeatedly to make sure that we were on top of our game on this. I, for one, feel that we deserve that chance to serve our community, giving our community a chance to visit us and to look things over, and so far, things have been pretty much on the up and up. It's sad that we are where we are right now, a situation that is isolated, if you will, and the individual in question does have a vendetta against Mr. McFadden.
His daughter and the one that he accused of seeing, looking down through the floor, Adam, I mean, there were people in that boat rooms upstairs and downstairs that he's talking about, looking down. There are two or three people in there at the same time. Because it was a toilet, right, because it was a bathroom, he said that he should, could possibly do that while his daughter is going in there, not while she's in there. If she went in there, because she does go to the bathroom, we have two toilets. And when she does go in that bathroom, he could be looking at. Never proven, never done. The time of the accusation, he said that, you know, just what he told these people, but it was only an accusation between him and her, because there were other people in the exact same to. When I say toilet, I mean, it's not a, it's not a, if you saw her in there, I mean, you see it's a single unit. And there's been repairs on the floor, the wall, the ceilings, everything. And in doing so, she is like a playmate of the guy, believe it or not. She was sixteen, seventeen, and the guy was twenty-one. And he was a kid that was there. And he supposedly admitted, he says, well, he says, I was looking down it, because I heard you guys banging down it.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor in seat five, Council Vice President LaBeau.
To the clerk, he had mentioned something about a time lapse. The license is currently expired?
Expired.
So they're not supposed to be operating at all until it gets renewed by the council? So if this gets sent to regulations tonight, there's no flea market coming up this weekend or until that regulations hearing, correct?
And for clarification, the license that exists is under Mr. Janelle's name. This is a new application for this other party.
Okay, but Mr. Janelle's license is expired?
It's expired.
So nobody has any right to be running anything right now?
Exactly.
Okay. And the other question I have is, you said no one's lived there for twelve years upstairs?
No, there's one person that lives at security. He used to do the Kilburn Mills, right? At night, we used to go five to, no, she, nine to five in the morning. And he needed a place to stay. He was homeless, has no car, has no family, and that's where.
Is it apartment upstairs?
No. Well, it's apartment, it's two rooms. There's no water, there's no running water, there's no toilet, no running, no kitchen. There's nothing in there.
So the communication that I had gotten from the building--
Point of order, that just sounds like a health violation.
The communication that I received from the building inspector is that he's been over this several times and that no one is supposed to be living upstairs, and that he's gone there. I'm not sure which one of you gentlemen he spoke to, but he's been denied access to upstairs. So he can't, he's not been allowed to see what's going on upstairs. No one is supposed to be upstairs living at all.
Upstairs is like, we got cameras and--
I understand that, but nobody is supposed to be living upstairs. And then you kind of mentioned another handful of people, that maybe there was a homeless person at one time, or someone that didn't have a place to stay, and you've allowed them to stay there. No one is supposed to be staying upstairs.
I've never denied it. I was here, I was here probably seven years ago, maybe six, seven years ago, and neighbors, like, didn't want anybody in their yard or anything like that. And at that time, right, it was openly said by me that there was a homeless guy living there that was the security.
Okay, but there's not supposed to be anybody living upstairs?
Well, like I said, if you call--
If I may interject--
--living there, you know, no water, no toilet.
If I may interject for a moment, this is an item that needs to be referred to the Committee on Regulations.
But in the meantime, there is no, nobody has a right to be operating this--
That is correct. And I'm sure that the city administration, the city administrators here, those individuals who report to her, I'm sure she'll pass any kind of messages along if this is an operation right now. In addition to that, this further debate and discussion needs to be before the Regulations Committee. The chair of the committee's here tonight, I'm sure he'll have a meeting scheduled as soon as possible. But I don't think it's healthy to have this debate.
I have one question. Does this only operate on the weekends, or during the week as well?
Right now, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday, technically.
Right, but you understand right now it can't be operating at all until this--
Like I said, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna take over the license, I'm just gonna shut it down. I'm not gonna be able to get it--
You're not gonna shut it down because of him?
Yeah, but I got two weeks on my--
We will allow, excuse me, guys, please. We will allow the opportunity before the Regulations Committee, and we'll deal with it at that point. We have, we are in a public hearing.
I don't want my license--
We are, excuse me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, point of information.
Very quickly.
The gentleman, if the gentleman is withdrawing his application, then this is moot. It would not be referred to any committee. I think he just said that on the record, that he's withdrawing his application. So, Madam Clerk, can the applicant withdraw his application at this time?
Certainly. And the item's before you, it's item number twenty-seven. So when it comes to that item, you can grant it leave to withdraw?
No, he just withdrew the applicant. He just stated--
Yes, but we still need to act on the item, Counselor.
We can accept his withdrawal of his intent to apply.
We can. Do whatever we want.
The--
We can also refer it to regulations for the individuals to have a proper hearing as well, if that's what needs to happen.
Yes.
Which I think would only be fair.
I think that's premature to say it's referred to regulations. The matter is already referred to public safety.
I think you're getting confused, Counselor. I'm gonna say this one more time. So we have a communication that came down from the individual who was here before. That item was referred to, the communication, the letter that was received by the City Council President, the city clerk, was put on our agenda to be referred to public safety for a public safety reason. We have an item on our agenda tonight, item number twenty-seven, where this city council is gonna need to act on the license. Whether we reject it, approve it, give it leave to withdraw, we need to act on that item. At that point, we can refer item twenty-seven to regulations if we want, so both parties can have their day before that committee and speak further. You're talking about two separate items even though they're one item.
I understand.
Mr. President, point of order.
I understand, Mr. President.
We're in the middle--
I think I had a--
Counselor in seat one?
I had a point of order prior--
Counselor in seat one?
--to the ones.
We're, it is amazing. We're in public hearing. We're supposed to be listening to people that are in favor or opposed.
Correct.
We're having a full-out conversation about the Board of Health and whether or not flea market's gonna be open. Can we just listen to what the reasons are for the flea market granting the license to the individuals and those who do not want it to be granted? Why? And then close the public hearing and have the full discussion. Thank you. I agree. Anything further?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hear-- you have any other comments, sir?
Yes, I do.
If you can conclude those, please.
Licenses, according to date, when the license is up for renewal, and I go down for renewal, or the renewal is coming, it does come back, many times, a week or two after. If there's a city council meeting that's canceled sometimes, or whatever it be, whatever it be, the license is still in effect. That's what I'm told. Because May first is supposed to be the end.
We have, we have this item before us to speak about a public hearing with respect to permission to operate and maintain a secondhand store. That's what we're gonna speak to. We're not gonna get into the policy and procedure of licensing. Counselor in seat five, Council Vice President LaBeau.
Did you have anything you wanted to answer?
What?
Does this individual, would you like to add anything?
The only thing I can add to this right now is we have gone through a lot of extensive repairs during those last six years. When former chairperson Linda Pereira, I was in her presence, and I've even invited Mr. Rigo, who was formerly among you, to look at it. Pat Casey did come, and she loved the place, how we went through great lengths to make a lot of improvements. We had the place inspected repeatedly to make sure that we were on top of our game on this. I, for one, feel that we deserve that chance to serve our community, giving our community a chance to visit us and to look things over. And so far, things have been pretty much on the up and up. It's sad that we are where we are right now, a situation that is isolated, if you will. And the individual in question does have a vendetta against Mr. McFadden. I mean, I understand where he was coming from, and of course, he's right now deeply frustrated as a result of what just transpired here. I'm a veteran, ladies and gentlemen. I have been with them for the last six years. Mr. Pelletier, you can certainly acknowledge the fact that I was here the last time, in your presence. And I have placed my words upon this floor once, and you have said so once, that in all the years in your politics, you have never heard me say these words so eloquent. Those were the words you told me, sir. And respectfully, I thank you. I would like to thank all of you for being here tonight to hear me out. I feel that we deserve that chance to make things correct. I understand it's sad that the situation happened as far as the bathroom incident, but we are making great efforts to make these corrections, to make sure that all the safeguards will be in place. We have a lot of cameras throughout that, our place right now, completely monitored at all times. And we wanna make sure that it is not just safe for us, but safe for the public. And we invite all of you, in your weekend, or whenever you have the time, even if it's for ten minutes, to walk around, go through, take a look for yourselves. You be the judge. Because I'm sure the public has been the judge, and they have come there. And we've gotten some positive results. People have loved coming there. To shut us down because of this one situation, who has an agenda, who has a vindictiveness to one individual, it's one thing to hurt one individual, or to get back at one individual because of a situation. I completely understand that, because if it was my kid, I would probably react it the same way. But I think I would have just done it a little different to this father's satisfaction. I kinda think that, right now, we need to take a little bit of a step back and give us that breathing that we need. We need to keep going. You're attacking one. You plan on shutting us down. You would shut down those of us who were not involved, who are going to be affected in some way or other. I would be included.
So I don't think anybody's made a decision on whether you should be shut down? What I had told Mr. Bassett and his wife, I spoke to them both, is that we can't just shut somebody down based on one side of a story?
Exactly.
That this letter that he wrote to us was going to public safety?
Mm-hmm.
However, the license--
We would definitely--
--would be going to regulations, which is who hears the licenses, if there is any issues, I guess, or any different size of a story?
I don't think we have a problem with public safety coming over to check things out.
Well, that--
I think, respectfully, I think that we have been more than forthcoming to, you know, to open our doors at any given time, even if it's a surprise inspection, which Glenn Hathaway has done in the past.
So what the police chief had said for this letter that Mr. Bassett had wrote was that there was something investigating, so not to have that meeting, because it couldn't be said publicly. But for the issue of the license transfer, that would go to regulations, so everybody can be heard, and that's what's fair. I know that the gentleman that, whose name the license is going to go under, said what he said. However, I think it's probably just out of frustration, and I don't think that--
And I understand his frustration right now, and I wish he would have just waited out and stayed with us.
Right. Well, I don't think, I wouldn't specifically take that as a withdrawal on his part. I think that the council, when it does come before, should still send it to--
I would like to ask this counsel to give this gentleman a chance to regroup himself and to be a little better prepared to meet with all of you. I mean, I'm no stranger to this arena, ladies and gentlemen. You've all heard my voice from before, including you, sir. And I would like to invite all of you, as I had stated before, on a given weekend, just come and tour the place. You be the judge. You see the things. If there's something that you're not entirely crazy about, we're there to listen to what all of you have to say about it.
The only issue with that is I think that, right now, this gentleman's license is expired, so it's not supposed to be running. That's not saying the second gentleman isn't going to get his renewed, or is or isn't. That's for regulations to decide. But he's not supposed to be operating right now without his license.
But then--
Like, three separate issues here, correct?
It would, in weeks before, if not three weeks before, if all the paperwork was done and in transition. And this happens to me on occasion. I don't believe it's anyone's fault, but the license does expire, and I get a call from here saying it's been passed.
Well, I would--
It's been passed, come and get it the next day, or the next week.
I would defer to the city clerk on that.
I mean, it's nobody's fault. It's like, I applied beforehand, and which we did this time. So the fact that it takes two weeks, or three weeks, or four weeks, and you say it expired, it was in transition. So I've heard, to be honest with you, I've heard other businesses, not hearsay, I mean, from listening to city council and asking why, what happens in between that period, if their license is issued a week later?
Okay, so we are, we're not speaking of the policy and procedure of licenses. Is there anything further before this public hearing?
We were speaking of license and procedure.
But--
If she said we didn't have--
Motion to close the public hearing has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion on the motion. Hearing, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
So where does this sit now?
It's before us, on item twenty-seven on our agenda tonight. And it'll be up to the council at that point, whether they're going to refer it, accept it, reject it, or give it leave to withdraw.
Later tonight.
On item twenty-seven on our agenda, so it'll be later tonight. Yes. Thank you. Forward to City Council Committee on Finance, and I'll be called to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kadim?
Here.
Justice Kamara?
Here.
Stephen Kamara?
Here.
Delby?
Here.
Malaby LaBeau?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Valeris?
Here.
President Ponte?
Here. Pursuant to the open media law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. First item on our agenda tonight is citizens' input. There is three individuals signed up to speak here together. Jason Burns, Ray Hague, Ray Shuefield, regarding the home rule petition. If you can state your addresses for the record, please.
Jason Burns, 622 Valentine Street.
Ray Hague, Director of Veteran Services, Fall River.
Ray Scoville in Swan's Massachusetts.
Motion--
Motion to waive the rules?
Motion to waive the rules has been made by Council Vice President LaBeau, seconded by--
Second.
Counselor Pelletier, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Opposed.
Counselor in seats, six opposed.
I just oppose.
Floor is yours, Mr. Burns.
I just wanna thank Counsel Ponte and all the councils for allowing us in here to give our input on this. You have an agenda item in front of you this evening. It's a home rule petition, has written it, is in regards to Fall River, city employees, firefighters specifically, that are military veterans, who are looking to reopen their period to apply, to buy back their military time. There is a state law which dictates that needs, that process needs to take place. They need to indicate that they're going to purchase their military time within their first hundred and eighty days. We've had some issues with that process, and that mechanism has really gotten in the way of some of our military veterans being able to purchase their time, their credit. So what we're looking to do is see if we can have a one-time reopening of that period. I will tell you that this has been probably about a six- or seven-year process for me. We've been looking at this issue and ways to kind of fix it. This is not a firefighter issue. This is, you know, citywide. It's a statewide issue. So we've worked with our professional firefighters in Massachusetts, our state organization, to look at a state fix. And obviously, some of the state fixes take a little longer. So what we were looking to do was use this home rule petition to address our firefighters. We had spoken to Senator Ken Donley, one of the leaders in the Senate, that asked us to focus and narrow, you know, who we were working for on this one. He said that that would be our best way to get this done, and then work on a state fix. So that's what we did. So that's what I presented you guys with, is a fix for firefighters. But I am currently still working to get a state fix on that. I think Ray can probably speak a little bit to the veteran issue statewide.
It's an issue that veterans throughout the system contact my office about. They feel it's an inequity. The last time the state opened up the so-called window to let veterans that have gone by the 180 was 2001. And things have changed since 2001. Things have changed quite a bit since 2001. And the logic behind something like this becomes, you know, how equitable is it? It's not that anyone allowed into the system for those years they want to buy, they have to pay for them, just as if somebody that moves throughout this PARAC system, you can leave, come back, buy time, and there's no window for that. And, you know, when veterans serve, they give it the opportunity to be in a position that they might be filling within the system. So it seems to be only fair that, when they come back, that they could buy that time, and buy it, you know, when they want to buy it, not, you know, you gotta make that decision a hundred and eighty days. Again, a lot of veterans, when they first come into the system, they're young, they have young families, they have a lot of bills. So that little bit of money to buy it is too much. So later on, I told Jason that, you know, I would support the firefighter issue, because I think everybody should get it. But I think it's a statewide issue that should be for all veterans. And I understand they're working on that at the state level to correct this inequity. Every year, there's more and more legislation passed for veterans, and this is another piece. I think they'll get to it. But it would be nice if Fall River kicked the ball up, got it going first, and, you know, this'll go from here, it will go up to the legislature, and Fall River will be first on something. So that's my input.
Anything further? Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. I certainly don't think it's right, you know. I know a lot of people who retired, because I'm an old guy, and some guys got twenty, twenty-two years in, and they decide they want to buy back to go out, to retire, and it's only right. And they have a right to do it, and I can't see why these people are being punished because a hundred and eighty days you didn't decide, or the veteran didn't decide that, you know, I should have bought it, I didn't buy it. It's not right for you, when everybody else can do it. So you certainly got my support, and whatever I can do, you know, will try to help you out. And I'd like to see this squared away for everybody with that idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Long.
Good evening. You said this is not a firefighter. This is a veterans' issue, but it only applies to firefighters?
This particular home rule petition applies only to firefighters, the way I read it. It's a start. Like I said, I'm here to support the veterans, but I would like to see it across the board. I'd like to see it for all veterans in the system.
So I'm having a difficult time understanding where this is going, and who's putting this regulation in. Is it the VA that puts this in? Is it the state of Massachusetts?
State law.
All right, so the state of Massachusetts is enforcing this hundred and eighty-day rule on firefighters?
On everybody.
They do it on police officers?
Yes.
They do it on everybody?
All veterans in the system.
So any veteran that has, who comes into the state pension system, has a hundred and eighty days to make a decision if they want to transfer that time and buy it back, where they have to pay whatever they would have paid into the system?
That's correct.
And if they don't make that in the first hundred and eighty days, they lose that right?
Right. Until such a time, and like I said, it was 2001, that the legislature probably gets so much pressure on them, they open the window, what they call open a window.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have a hundred and eighty days from the time the window opens to buy your time. But then they close the window again. And like I said, we have a lot of veterans now, and it's different since 2001, the way they rotate. They could be on the job and get called in, and then they have to go. Come back, and that time, I don't know if they can buy that time, but that's an example of what's going on right now.
Counselor Long, if it would help you, we were told to narrow our focus on our firefighters when I went to the State House. They told me that when I try to fix too much all at once, it tends to get bogged down. So we narrowed our focus--
They'll fix it on their own. Once they find out what it's about, they'll say, hey, wait a minute, this doesn't make any--
I wouldn't be opposed to this being changed to help out every veteran in the city who needs to reopen that period. So we're certainly on board with that.
Yeah, and I think I can maybe understand it, because what's happening here is that those individuals have never really participated in the state system, and the state wants to get control of it right away, so they want to know in that first hundred and eighty days. So it's really, it's not a buyback, it's almost like a buy-in, and they get credit for the time's service, which I think they should. I think it's a worthy fight. I'm in support of it. It's a little quirky thing that is going on, but guys are getting hurt by it. Because I know, I myself had left state service, phew, many, many years ago, came back, and bought the time back. Years later, I didn't have to make any, I didn't have to tell them anything. I just came back and said, hey, I want to buy that time back, and I did. So I can support it. I was just kinda concerned. I didn't know if it was just a veterans' issue or a firefight issue. You're telling me it's a veterans' issue, but you're focusing on firefighters. Okay, I can understand that, too. I'm in support of this without any hesitation. So good luck with this, and I hope you win.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat four, Counselor Kilby.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I was very, very surprised when I thought this was even going on. I mean, like you said, a young family, sometimes doesn't have the resources to buy, to buy back, buy back their time, if you understand what I'm saying. Through, President, through the clerk, do we have the authority as a council to request that this home rule petition apply to all veterans? I don't know if it's gonna hurt your cause, Mr. Burns, but do we have that ability? Because I think that's, it'd be the only fair to do that.
I would say you could amend the order, but I would suggest that you maybe table it and check with the judge before doing something like that.
We could also, interject for a moment, we could also, you know, pass it so this doesn't get tied up, and then we could send a memo letter indicating to whatever rep picks this up, to say, you know, this should be a universal issue, and we can all do our own necessary campaigning.
Our three reps will carry, carry our action up to Boston for the home rule petition. Just one other thought. This is no financial impact to the retirement system, because the individual's buying the time back with interest, right?
That's an important clarification. The members are buying back their own time. We're not asking the city to put in this money towards--
It's just a surprise to me that it's just not, it should not, it's not just an open, an open thing that should be, that should be allowed. So, yeah, I have no problem. I know you called me at my home personally, Mr. Burns, and I appreciate the hard work that you do for the firefighters. And it's an issue that, you know, I wouldn't even have been aware of if it wasn't for you. So hopefully, you started something, starting with your group, that would pass on to the rest of the veterans and other minister employees. So, thank you. I--
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just some clarifying points. Before I do that, though, so I will say that I would support this, and I'd be willing to make a motion not to approve this solely as-is, but to approve it subject to the legal counsel reviewing it, and if applicable, amending where it says firefighter, that it just simply state all city, all veterans who are employed with the city of Fall River. And then, either way, if we can't do it, then it will be submitted as-is. If it can be amended, then we send that out. I think Mr. Burns and the gentleman at the table are aware that any type of home rule petition, it's quite a process to get it, you know, started and initiated, and then voted on at the legislature. So the last thing I want to do is submit something that's at the, just specifically for the firefighters, and tell certain representatives that, you know, we should change it. You know, then they, then they get tied onto different bills, and then, you know, there's all kinds of things that take place. So I think a home rule petition typically is pretty straightforward, if you've got the support of your, you know, local delegation, plus the city council. So I would suggest that. The only clarifying point that I did have, though, was when we spoke, I thought we were looking to eliminate the hundred and eighty days. And just the way I read this, it still seems like we would be forcing the veterans, if approved, to either purchase back their credible years of service, or enter into a payment plan within a hundred and eighty days. So we're just opening up that window, but they only have a hundred and eighty days. Are we still looking to do that? Is that the intent? It was to give them, to reopen that window for a hundred and eighty days to-- So you do want to cap it at the 180. And the only reason I ask is, Mr. Hague kind of alluded to the fact that, you know, sometimes veterans are not, or the employees are not in a financial position at this particular time to start entering into a payment plan. So if you're gonna force somebody to identify the hundred and eighty days, and I think you kind of cut them off, from my standpoint, I think we probably should look at amending it at least to a two- or five-year window, to give them an opportunity to buy back in. Obviously, knowing full well that the longer you wait, the more interest you're gonna have to pay on it. So if you're buying back a year's service, and that equates to $10,000, it may equate to $20,000 next year and the year after. But I just think, again, if we're trying to help the veterans, especially those that may be living paycheck to paycheck, I think we might want to just change the 180. That's-- If it's palatable for this council, I'm on board with that. Again, the language that you had before you was presented through legal counsel at the State House, and they--
State House, and they were kind of saying, hey, these things aren't always easy, so let's narrow our scope. But if we're in agreement here, I'm in agreement.
So everything's always easy at the Fall River City Council. It's at the State House that it's not.
I've noticed that.
So, you know, I think if they're talking about it not being easy here, I think everybody, and I don't want to speak for my other counselors, my colleagues, but I think we all support the veterans, and I think, you know, the years of service should be one for one. So I think, to me, it's a no-brainer, and I would support that. I just, again, if we're really going to try to do something and make a difference, I would just say that we try to extend that to a, you know, and it's an arbitrary number, two to five years, but at least it gives individuals an opportunity to stop figuring out and planning, if there is going to be an installment plan, how much is coming out of their paychecks and really kind of deal with that.
Would it be fair to say they have 180 days to indicate that they're going to apply to have it back, and they'll just leave it then? They can do it in 10 years, 14 years, whatever it is, but they've indicated within 180 days that they're going to purchase it back?
Right, that they're interested in buying back. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Consul. Consul in seat five, Consul Vice President LaBeau.
That's all they have to do when they're hired, too, is just indicate within the 180 days. They don't have to purchase it.
That's correct.
And you had mentioned working on it at the state level, but you had also told me when we first started working on this, that you're also working on it locally. So in the meantime, while the state hasn't fixed it, when you do have new employees, you all are better at explaining the process, what it means, that they don't have to purchase it right then, that they simply have to check the box so that in however length of time they can...
Yes, internally, when we have an academy that starts, this is one of the topics of conversation, and it's really just about educating, informing, and making sure guys understand the scope. And, you know, in the past, I'm not sure that's always happened. I can tell you with the academies, that's happened in my tenure as president, they've all been very well informed and have made their decision.
Okay. So I would be on board with it, saying that they just need to indicate within that window that at some point in the future, they might want to, just as they would if, as if they were first hired. That I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you very much. Consul in seat four.
I know I put you on the spot, Jason, but how many veterans do you have when you rank and file? Just curious.
It's probably about 40%, I'm guessing right now, maybe 50%. There's probably, so this, this probably is about 10 to 12 guys that fit this, that we were speaking specifically to in the fight upon, about 10 to 12.
And then you've got the police, too. You've got the police side.
Oh, yeah.
System-wide, you'd find even more.
Interesting. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Consul in seat three, Consul Kamara.
Yeah, I'm supportive of passing this through and presenting it to the State House. Is this order that's before us an order that's coming from the city's administration? Who was submitting this order to the council?
Consul LaBeau. Consul LaBeau submitted it for me.
Okay. And is Corporation Counsel weighed in on this and concurred with process, if you know the answer to that, or...
From my understanding, Consul LaBeau put it through Corporation Counsel, take a look at.
Okay, if I could, through the chair, just have Ms. LaBeau respond to that question?
Consul Vice President.
Because there was a charter issue that says that only the mayor can issue orders. So I just want to have that clarified and process.
I did email this to Corporation Counsel, and he said he didn't see any issue with it.
Okay. And then, only because I've had significant contact with the Secretary of State's office and legal counsel for the Secretary of State on home rule petitions, she has indicated to me that language that would be submitted to the state for home rule petition should be nurtured and supported by both the local Corporation Counsel as well as counsel to the great and general court. So my understanding is that this also has received some advice from the counsel of the great and general court, correct?
That's where the language originated.
Right. So I think that for any attempt to amend this would be detrimental to getting this ball rolling. I think what we ought to do is, and right now, we're just in citizen input time, so we're just gathering information, but when it comes time for us to address item number 28, I would encourage us to pass it. Send it to the State House. It's received, as I understand, both input from our local Corporation Counsel and from the counsel to the great and general court. If they're both on board, they know the language that is likely going to get voted on and supported by the State House, to then putting, for us then to put amendments to it or changes to it, I think may jeopardize its passage. It's received stamps of approval from the appropriate folks who need to give it stamps of approval. I concur that it also ought to be expanded to include anyone and everyone that is deserving of this, but I think that that's something that can be done through the State House process. Let's get the ball rolling. Let's get this thing passed. Let's get it passed with the support as we've received support from both our local counsel and from the counsel of the great and general court. Mr. Burns is the chief architect of this, and Mr. LaBeau is submitting it, and if Corporation Counsel is okay with that, then I'm okay with it, and let's just move it forward and let any amendments occur through the process of the state process. So that's my suggestion. And I appreciate the input, and certainly I'm supportive as well. Mr. Hague?
I'm probably not 100% sure, because I'm getting old, but it's my recollection that the legislature cannot amend the home rule petition that's been passed by either the people, the counsel, and the administration. So when it gets there, it's my understanding that it would be, they either voted up or down. I don't think they can amend a home rule petition by the, by the people or the legislative body here.
I agree with that, but I think what the, what the state could do, though, is take the issue and then expand upon it through their process.
Yeah, I think they're working on it now.
So if there are other legislators up there that are saying, well, this is a good idea, and I want it to apply to my community, and then they also might expand to say, well, I also want it to be applied to other public employees, then all of that could be done as it should be done by state legislation. And, but this, you're right, I agree with you, that this piece of home rule petition would not be amended by the state.
Right.
It would be adopted or rejected as a home rule petition.
It would be another law that you'd have to do.
There has been an act relative to military buyback time filed by PEREC. It's in the beginning stages, and that's sometimes where it gets bogged down, so I'm hopeful this passes.
Good. Okay, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Consul in seat one, Consul Akadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I guess, would make a suggestion that this is six years in the, in the making. I don't know that two weeks would really hurt us, so if we just refer this particular order back to Corporation Counsel and have Mr. Burns work out with Corporation Counsel and amend the language to include all the employees, bring it back to us at the next council meeting, and then we just approve it and move it forward, then there's no question. And I think at that point, Corporation Counsel can work, work out with the legal counsel for the House of Representatives on the actual language and get everybody to agree to it. I mean, it's not that convoluted in terms of language. I think that's a quick turnaround time. Would you agree?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And if it doesn't work, I'd, you know, I'd be prepared to send this forward as well.
Okay. All right.
I yield. Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next person to sign up to speak is Roger Francis, One Shaw Street, Fall River, regarding the proposed waterway fee.
My name is Roger Francis. I'm the port captain with McAllister Towing of Narragansett Bay, and I'm here to, we operate out of Providence, the tug's under the I-way Bridge there, and we operate out of, we have a maintenance facility, and we keep a tug in Fall River at One Shaw Street. So we currently have six tugs in the bay, and I'm here to comment on an article that we saw in Herald News on the 7th, and South Coast Today on the 10th. And what it is, our understanding is it's a commercial vessel waterway fee that's going to be imposed on commercial vessels docking in Fall River. Less than 30 feet, there's an annual fee of $500. Over 30 feet, an annual fee of $1,000. And the biggest concern for us is a proposed docking fee of $500 for any vessel per docking. Well, obviously, we have six 100-foot vessels, and based on the work requirements, we, at one time, from the mid-'80s probably until the closing of Brayton Point, we had two to three tugs in Fall River all the time. First, we lost Shell Oil, Montop Electric, Brayton Point. So as a result of that, we reduced our tug fleet in Fall River to one. And what we do with that boat is anything at Firestone, Borden, Remington, we'll use that tug for. We'll use it for the inland fuel in Tiverton, and we'll also use it to go to Davisville. So in a given week, that tug is probably underway three or four days a week. Coming back at night is a docking. And in the article, it said that this is based on an increase in, in commercial traffic in the Taunton River and Mount Hope Bay, and quite honestly, we're seeing just the opposite of that. We've seen a substantial decline in ship traffic. So I don't, I just wanted to, I guess, based on the verbiage of what I saw there, I think that what they're trying to do is apply this toward foreign-flagged ships at state pier. It would be my guess, but the way that it's written, it's actually going to affect us So that, that was my comment on that. And again, we have six tugs, and if it was, you know, an annual fee per tug, we'll rearrange those tugs depending on the work. And there are times when we will have two or three tugs still in Fall River, but for the most part of the, you know, of the time, we have one there. So you can see my concern, you know, we, and it also stated that the, the fees were to go to the emergency responders and, and, you know, the upkeep of the no-wake zones and whatnot, where we own Shaw Street and we pay the city property tax, and feel that the property tax should probably go towards that. So that's why I came by, and I really have nothing else to add, just to note my, my comments on that.
Thank you very much. Consul in seat six, Consul Long.
Good evening.
Your microphone, please.
Just a, just a couple of short questions. Do you operate in any other harbors and messes?
We do. Well, we keep one boat at the Cape Cod Canal to do tug and barge escort work through Buzzards Bay and the canal.
Do you pay any waterway fees there?
That I don't know. I don't believe that we do, because we operate with DEP.
You operate right out of DEP's dock?
Well, we, we operate at Mass Maritime, and there's an exchange of docking of the schoolship.
How about Rhode Island? You have any operators in Rhode Island?
Yeah, we have the tugs up at India Street, yeah.
And do you pay any waterway fees up there?
I don't believe we do.
None?
I don't believe, I don't have that information at hand, but...
Well, basically, what we were told, and what we're trying to do here, is to institute what other harbors have done.
Well, I know we certainly don't pay a fee per boat and per docking. We, you know, we certainly have, currently, there's one, there's four tugs in Providence.
Well, I don't, I think what we were talking about, at least when we had this conversation, was if it was docked here all the time regularly, it would be one fee. But if it was a transit type of thing, where they'd go and come and go and come, then it would be every time they dock.
Yeah, you're talking commercial shipping, cargo shipping.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we're assist tugs that will help occasionally the shipment to Fall River State Pier, but, you know, to, so if we get underway, go to State Pier and then come back to Shaw Street.
So that, those fees would not be pushed upon the ship owner, or...
No.
No?
No.
Where would they come from?
Out of our pocket.
Out of your profit?
Out of our pocket. We're doing work. Funny, you should bring this up.
Yeah, I would.
We're doing work for basically the same amount that we did some of these jobs for in 2000, especially with, with our carships. There's a lot of competition, and we've been asked to pare our rates down, and I think that we're, we're comfortable with where they are. And I, and I don't, I can't speak to that. I honestly don't know about the waterways fees in Providence. I can't give you that answer.
I'm pretty sure they're pretty hefty, and I'm sure they pick them up. And I'm sure everybody who was up there, do business up there, pays them. So, you know, I can understand you saying, hey, look, you, you know, we're hurting, and we don't need to pay more fees, but when we look at the increase in, you're saying there's not an increase in business, but when we look at it and we see the investment that we're putting in on the waterfront and what we're trying to attract here, we're trying to put something in place now so that when that whole area starts to grow, we have, we have a proper system in place, so that we're collecting the proper fees. And when we're looking at our state pier and that type of stuff, we see these ships come in, and the City of Fall River is actually getting nothing. We're not getting anything from that. And they're discharging at night, they're doing all kinds of different things, we don't even have the, we don't even have the bodies or the ability to, to police it or even enforce any regulations that are out there. So what we're trying to do is to build those funds so that we can do that. So you need to understand, it's a...
Oh, no, I understand.
Chicken and egg type of thing. What came first?
Because of, we're typically not involved in a lot that goes on a state pier in Fall River, because it's such a small ship that would go in there. And occasionally, they'll call us, and we'll put one tug on it if it's, you know, adverse weather conditions or something like that, but we're typically not involved in that. What we have seen is a huge decline, obviously Brayton Point. We do a ship every 36 hours, every 40 hours there, and, you know, that's what we're seeing.
And you do a lot with, like, barges and that type of stuff, correct?
We do, yeah.
Towing barges and pushing barges and that type of stuff.
Assisting barges in the bay, which has declined substantially, too.
I yield for now.
Thank you. Consul in seat five, Consul Vice President LaBeau.
This, do you have a copy of the, I know that you said you read the newspaper articles, but do you have a copy of the change in the language?
No, I don't.
And maybe when it gets to that point, we can ask Ms. Paveras to clarify, but it says all cargo ships. So wouldn't that fee go right to the cargo ship and not necessarily to the tug?
Yeah, I didn't see that verbiage. I didn't see that.
So it says all cargo, all cargo ships will be required to pay a waterway fee each time they dock.
Okay.
Cargo vessels create a constant discharge of gray water into the river. This is all commercial vessels, commercial fishing boats, non-stationary barges, et cetera, using the waters of Fall River for more than 14 days per year, which would be, I think that might be where they fall in, are subject to the waterway user fee, and on the next page, I believe it's an annual fee. I mean, Paveras can correct if I'm wrong when, when it comes up on the agenda, but if you want to get a copy of the actual...
Yeah, I would love to see that, yeah.
Okay. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Consul in seat three, Consul Kamara.
I appreciate your input, and certainly appreciate you being a, an active participant in our waterfront development. I assume you're affiliated with Mr. Church?
Uh, no.
No? Okay. Is that Mr. Church in the audience?
Yeah, that is, yeah.
Known him for a long time. Happy to see him in our council chamber again. He's, he's invested a lot, both time and effort and money in our city. And so I, I just wonder, were you present when this issue was discussed in the Ordinance Committee?
I was not. I just heard about it two days ago in an email and was asked to, to come here and give a comment. So I'm basing, you know, what I'm talking about on the articles that I've read.
Okay, well, I, I didn't realize, in fact, I was asked by a gentleman prior to the meeting whether or not we'd be voting on this, and I apologize, I didn't think we were voting on this tonight, but in fact, we are going to be voting on this. But it seems to me that, that it's worthy of some more discussion, and I commend the[1730.33] And I commend the Ordinance Committee for the work that it has done. It has submitted to us a proposal. I also commend our harbor master for the work that he's done on this. So, this is not to dissuade anyone from giving credit where credit is due, but I think that always when something is as significant as this, that it's worthy of significant discussion, and even though significant discussion has already occurred, more discussion might make it even better. So, I am willing and supportive of when this comes before us, and certainly just to keep this issue moving forward, to pass it through first reading, and refer it back to Ordinance Committee so that you could then have an opportunity to review what's currently before the, before us, and then if there are others, Mr. Church or others, that also wants to impact the process, that then it could be done in committee, because that would be the appropriate place for it to be done.
Okay.
So, I'll recommend that upon it coming before us later on this evening, that we do pass it through first reading, refer it back to Ordinance Committee, make sure that your address is given to the city clerk before you leave, so that when that meeting is held by Ordinance Committee, you and anyone you want to bring with you can be available to give input to the committee, so that when it comes back to us in possibly a different form, that your input will have been heard.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll recommend that when it comes before us, Mr. President, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. Anything further? Counselor in seat five?
The city clerk is making your copy of what is-
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything further on this item? Thank you very much. Next person to sign up to speak is Don Church, 1138 Say Dale Street, Fall River, regarding the proposed waterway fee.
Excuse me, I'm not as fast as I used to be. Now, we, I'm a, I was a licensed pilot for most of the East Coast, anywhere from Maine to New York. I sort of morphed from that into the tugboat industry. We ran the tugboats for, out of Fall River here for about thirty years. Consequently, we were in oil transportation, which is a very high-risk business. You can have a kid go out and make a mistake, and they want to put you in jail for it. Consequently, we did, we found a major company in Texas that thought they could corner the market up here in New England, so they bought out quite a few different companies, including ours. But because of being in the oil transportation business, we were into places like Portland, Maine, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, all up and down the coast of New York, and we got a, I get a good look at how these other ports operate. I don't know of any other port that puts a tariff on docking. A property owner may put a tax on you or a fee for docking, but I've never noticed a city or a state to do it. The only tax that I know of is the state of New York. It became highly controversial, they put a tax on fuel burned within the state of New York. Where did that get complicated? We had investigators and people in our office for weeks trying to determine how much time we spent in New York waters as compared to, say, the state of Connecticut or New Jersey. I take great exception to the way this proposal is worded, where they say that they've had a terrific increase in shipping. You've lost about everything. Shell Oil's closed, Montop is closed, Brayton Point is closed. When we were in operation, we had six vessels sailing from Duvall Street. They're gone. Down there now, we've fronted the property out to a construction company from New Bedford, and he's been, I guess he's been in dock rebuilding and repairs. I really don't know what they're doing. I mean, I'm not part of that operation at all. I have a question, and I can't answer it, perhaps the board can. What is a commercial vessel? And that's a very broad question, because you can have a vessel registered either with the state or with the Coast Guard. If it's registered with the Coast Guard, is it then a commercial vessel, or if it's registered with the state, is it commercial? And that goes into another whole range of things. Battleship coal, they've got vessels down there. In some sense, they're commercial because they're carrying passengers for hire.
Fifteen seconds.
The only reason they're not Coast Guard inspected is because they're permanently chained to the dock. If they were Coast Guard inspected, they couldn't exist. You'd be shipping to go to dry dock once, twice in five years, you'd have Coast Guard inspectors down there going over them for safety reasons. So, that question of commercial vessels, to me, is very broad.
Thank you very much.
And I can't answer it.
Thank you. And just so the council can know to answer your question, Mr. Church, it's defined in the ordinances of the city of Fall River, which is before us tonight, and it reads, "A commercial vessel, a vessel, i.e. a boat, ship, or barge, engage in commercial trade or that carries goods or passengers for hire, or is not normally used primarily for pleasure and recreational activities." That's how it's defined in our ordinances, and that was before the city council's ordinance committee.
Okay. Again, what are you gonna do with Battleship Coal?
Counselor in seat three.
So, Mr. Church, it's good seeing you again after a few decades.
At least.
Right. As I stated to the previous gentleman, you should be sure to have your address provided to the clerk right behind you, so that when and if, I assume this matter will be referred back to Ordinance Committee, that you will have more time at that point to present your argument, and you can get a copy of what has been updated, because apparently there might be some changes in what you have in front of you, but all of that can be done when it's heard at a more extensive level in committee.
There is one other thing that we just, I'm not by any stretch of imagination or attorney, we heard driving up here from a former commissioner in New Bedford, that they tried to do the same thing in New Bedford a few years ago, and it was determined to be illegal because they were infringing upon interstate commerce. Whether that's a fact or a fiction, I don't have a clue. Haven't had a chance to check into it, but that's what we heard coming up here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Mr. Church. Thank you. Next person to sign up to speak is Assad.
What is it?
Absad. I don't know how to say your last name, if you can save for the record. 440 Stafford Road, Fall River, regarding item 34, the Let's Roll Express. Item 34 on our agenda tonight. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Assad Absal, address is 440 Stafford Road, Fall River. I'm here today regarding my store. It's on Stafford Road, and I was just talking to Marilyn, and she has stated to me that there is about, in two-mile radius, not two-mile radius, two-mile street from Plymouth Ave, Stafford Road, and it goes up to the cemetery, there is about eight current licenses for to sell tobacco, and there is one pending and two more that are already there. So, there's already too many licenses in one street, and it's getting hard day by day how to, like, do business. Too many stores opening now, and certain other cities, they already put a cap on that, and she was just mentioning to me that there's about 134 licenses to sell tobacco in Fall River. So, I'm just like, is there a way we can do something about it? Like Brockton, Stoughton, and Attleboro, they had capped. There's not many you can open, no more shops. So, it's just getting too much, you know? Is there a way we can do something about it? I submitted my letter with the city council, Board of Health, and Mayor's and Law Office. That's the only thing.
Thank you very much. Anything further from the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can, I mean, you have a couple more time, if you want to continue to speak.
No, that's it.
Thank you.
No problem.
Next item on our agenda is transfers and appropriations. Next item on our agenda, the mayor in a loan order of $7,426,755 for repairs, or $7,755 for repairs of Samuel Watson's Elementary School. That's gonna be the first item we'll take? That's what it is, transfers and appropriations, oh, I'm sorry, transfers and appropriations, which would be the EMS capital and EMS stabilization fund, that would be the first item before us, I stand corrected. Madam City Administrator, Mrs. Sahadi. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you. The only question I had was, I believe the reference to the transfer was to come out of the stabilization account to purchase equipment for OSHA-related requirements, I'm just curious, what type of equipment is that, and what are the requirements?
Protective. Sorry, Counselor, it would be protective gear, and the chief is here, if you want more further detail from him, or, yeah, I don't see Mr. Oliver. Chief Lynch?
Evening.
Evening, Chief.
So, the transfer of money, which you see here, is because there was a shortfall because the EMS division had to buy protective gear, and this was unforeseen because this was an OSHA mandate that was adopted by the state. So, the gear that they bought were 49 sets of basically almost the same exact gear as what firefighters wear at fire scenes. And this was needed because all the paramedics, obviously, respond to all our fires, and they stand by at their fires. So, that's what this appropriation is actually for.
So, bunker gear, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And that was, I'm sorry, how many was that?
Forty-nine sets.
Forty-nine sets, all right. Aye, oh, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything further, Counsel on this item? Madam City Administrator, you want to indicate anything, or enough said?
Actually, no, Mr. President. Again, the chief's done a good job of explaining it, and again, it was not something that could have been anticipated because the OSHA regulations actually took effect in February of 2019, and prior to that, the departments were all assessing their needs, and EMS determined that this was essential for them, so we're recommending that it come from the EMS stabilization account.
I'm sorry, Counselor in seat one? One more, just clarification, so is it pants and jackets, or just pants?
It was boots, pants, and jackets, and also a few helmets, but most of the paramedics, they were already-
So, full turnout gear?
Yes.
Okay.
And gloves.
All right. Aye, oh. Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, thank you, Chief. Next item before us on this item is going to be 11A, mayor order appropriating $185,000 from CPA funds undesignated for the Copacoot Reservoir Watershed Protection Land Acquisition Project. Is there anybody else here to speak on this, have to come down on this?
Yes, if Mr. Souza is here, and Mr. Sullivan.
So, we, we're looking to fund the DCU with $185,000 for a grant for a watershed protection proposal that was submitted to us by DCU with Mr. Ferland, Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. LeBassier. They came before us in September in the regular process of CPA with eligibility, and back to us in funding the round with the application for funding of originally $370,000. The project itself totaled $400,000, and I believe it was like a $21,000 in-kind donation for, or not a donation, but through the Water Department, they were gonna fund $21,000. They also did their due diligence in trying to find other funds, and they applied for a drinking water grant for drinking water protection, and they received $200,000 from the state. And in that grant, the requirement was that it had to be completed by June 30th, I believe. So, they came, Mr. LeBassier contacted me, they came before us, and CPA committee deemed that it was an emergency because of the timeframe, and that the FY '20 funds wouldn't be available till July, so if they didn't get these funds by the end of June, they would lose that grant money. So, we deemed it an emergency, and we funded them, we asked to fund them $185,000, which was half of what they asked for from CPA. So, part of CPA, one of the great things about it, and we really look for, is leveraging funds, which they exactly did that. I mean, $200,000 is a lot of money, and we really appreciate it, and that's one of the great things about the CPA process. So, we funded them that money.
So, this is 16 acres of virgin land near the end of paved Copacoot Road, near Quantapog Road. It's virgin forest, the owners have subdivided it with the potential intent of selling three lots for construction of houses. It's within 500 feet of our secondary water supply, the Copacoot Reservoir. Our staff, Mr. LeBassier and our grant writer, have obtained a matching grant from the state drinking water supply fund of up to $200,000. We have come to agreement with the owners of a total sale price for all three lots of So, with the $185,000 from CPC if approved, and with our matching grant, we would have available another $185,000. That brings us up to $370,000, $355 for the purchase, in addition, $15,000 for legal closing cost for applying the conservation restriction on the land. The, as Mr. Souza stated, the difficulty is that to get the state drinking water grant funds, we have to close by June 30th, which is coming up rapidly. So, we're hoping for the approval of the CPC funds, and in full counsel, we have the actual orders for the authorization of the council to approve the acquisition of the land. We're also asking that be approved tonight as opposed to be referring to subcommittee just because of the time, so that we don't lose the grant. It's a good spot of area, it's protection for long-term for our water supply, and we're hoping to get your support.
Again, this whole process began maybe three weeks, two, a month possibly ago. It was that quick, and that's why, actually, April 12th is the date that I have from the letter from DCU, but Mike LeBassier had contacted me, and we tried to expedite it as quickly we could through CPC because of that reason.
And that necessity to expedite was because of the grant, which is a wonderful thing, but because we're in this round of funding from the state, if we don't utilize it by June 30th, we lose it.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor in seat five, Counsel Vice President LaBeau.
I'm okay with the appropriation. The only question I have as far as the CPA funds is when all of those projects were in front of us previously, and before the roof of the library was in front of us, I believe Mrs. Dennis wasn't here, and she said there was maybe $500,000 left?
Well, that was in the account balance of CPC, and since that time, I mean, we're, like, as the quarterly taxes come in, the funds kind of increase a little bit, so it changes like almost per month, really, a little bit. So, the availability of the funds is there for that. So the availability of the funds is there for that.
Okay. Because what we have is a CPA fund balance as of June 30th, 2018. Do we know what it is now?
I don't have that. It was approximately, right now, there is, I would say, $450,000 in the account balance.
After the roof?
After the roof. Yes.
Thank you, Counsel in seat one. Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Sullivan, just a question. How many acres did you say it was?
Just over 16, 16.1.
16 and it was only, so they only have, I guess, the ability through zoning to subdivide it for three lots? Is that...
Yes. So that subdivision through planning and zoning has occurred. It's similar to a large lot next door to where three houses were built that we weren't able to acquire. So yes.
Okay. So it does have frontage, it's not landlocked. What was the appraised value of the property? Do you know?
$370,000 was the appraised value. The parties have agreed for the sale at $355,000.
Okay. And then you had mentioned that obviously there's some time constraints. So what's before us is just the 1, what was it, 185? Is that what we said?
Yes.
So are you going to apply for the grant?
We have the grant. We have authorization of the grant.
Oh, you have the grant?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So it's not a question as whether or not the grant's going to be awarded?
Yeah. The only question is, is we have to close by June 30th. So the state has made that authorization. We have the grant ready to go.
All right. Perfect. Aye, yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Counsel in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. It seems to be very easy. By not sending it to the Committee of Real Estate, you seem to have everything pretty ironed out. And you do have a deadline and I don't see no reason why this can't go through tonight. I see no reason why it should go to the Committee on Real Estate. I mean, we have a job to do. It's pretty plain. It's in front of us. That's what we should do to preserve that land. So you got my vote with that, Aye, yield.
Thank you. Anything further, Counsel in seat one?
Yeah, just a question in terms of my colleague in seat seven had just brought up. So if we're not going to go through real estate, are we prepared to obviously be able to declare it a unique parcel so we don't have to go out through 30B process?
Yes, Counsel. Given its proximity to the watershed, yes.
All right. Aye, yields.
Anything further? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Mrs. Susan. Next item, three, is mayor in the loan order of $7,426,755 for repairs to the Samuel Watson Elementary Schools referred on the 23rd of April. Mr. Pacheco is here.
Kenny here?
He is here, yep. Madam City Administrator, Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, Mr. Pacheco is here to answer your questions you may have. You have also, I believe, received in your packet information regarding the ADA compliance requirements. The state did receive a waiver to allow those ADA elements to be completed. I think it's over the next two years. And we just want to be sure that the council is aware that once you've agreed to fund this portion of the project, we will need to come back to you to address the costs for the ADA improvements. So we just wanted to be clear that this doesn't complete the project, but it certainly allows the city to take part in the MSBA's accelerated repair program for the portion of the work that they are willing to fund. And Mr. Pacheco?
Sure. So by splitting the project, it allows us obviously more time to take a look at items that we did not put before MSBA, which was at the request of Counselor Long. We, he had talked about air conditioning and that is going to be one of the things that we are going to add on to the ADA compliance piece. It's a little bit of a challenge in that building since it wasn't designed to be air-conditioned. So that's taking a little bit of time to actually plan out. But we're through schematic design for a lot of the work, except for this work, which is just a little bit advanced of schematic design. So our ultimate goal with the loan order of $7,426,775 is to take care of the MSBA partnership, which is all of the work, including fire suppression and alarm, and then putting all the ADA items on hold, which would have to be completed by November of 2021. So the goal would be to move this piece forward. MSBA would get started with us. And somewhere along the line, towards the end of the MSBA construction project, we would be back looking for the remainder of the funds in order to do the second portion of this project.
Thank you, Counsel in seat four. Counselor Kilby.
So of course reimbursable, right?
So the reimbursement part of the $7,426,775 would be $4,180,690 from MSBA.
Okay, great. I thought in the past that MSBA wouldn't reimburse, well, you answered the question, but I thought in the past that they wouldn't reimburse improving old structures. They would just reimburse improving new construction.
So there's a new program called Accelerated Repair. I'm not sure how new it is. But what they found is that in order to preserve some of the larger money for core projects, if they did small repairs on buildings, which is roof, doors, windows, boilers, they would be able to extend the life of those buildings and therefore keep those buildings out of core construction money and allow for those core projects such as Durfee High School to continue. The accelerated repair program is very successful and we currently are in the construction phase at Tansy, windows and boilers and doors. And this would complete that particular ask that we had to MSBA for that first round of projects.
And finally, as a building needs assessment, I think I heard you last time you were here through the superintendent that the school is vital for us in terms of the space that we...
It is. So it houses approximately 307 students, two grade levels each. And it's a neighborhood school. So we have very little busing in that school. And it is an extremely successful school for us. So we, it's a great investment, we feel, for the city to keep this building in our roles. And by air conditioning it, obviously, it will make this building as comfortable as the newer ones that we have. And with the upgrades, this building will be close to, will be beyond the repairs that we did at Westall.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate your good work.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. So the actual cost for the city would be about $2.3 million?
The balance between seven, I'm sorry, I didn't do the math.
I did.
Very good, Mr. Pelletier. I'm going to go with what you're saying, if that's close.
I done the arithmetic.
Fantastic.
That's what it comes up. Now, is that school, they're using the school now, right?
Absolutely.
Now, during the process of changing everything, it's going to be closed?
No.
They're going to do that while the kids...
Absolutely. So it's summer work. It's vacation work. And the roof will be done, obviously, simultaneously with some of the other work. Windows are a lead, a long lead time. So windows are about a 20-week order, once we give them the okay to get started. So again, some of that work will be done. What they normally do in classrooms is they put up temporary walls. So they'll build a wall inside the classroom so that they can work on windows while the building is occupied.
Wow. I find that hard to believe, but I guess if you say it can be done, it can be done. What would be the second round of fees, money-wise for the city? Are we getting reimbursed on that?
There's no reimbursement on that half. That is all on the city dime, the second half.
What kind of money would be?
So it's approximately about $3 million without the air conditioning?
$3 million.
Without air conditioning.
So now what?
So the air conditioning piece, we could be pushing at least for 4.5.
Now, how many stories?
This building is three stories plus basement.
So we're having an elevator put in?
This building, so the ADA compliant piece will be elevators, ramps, handicap bathrooms on all floors. It will include the other handicap items such as doorknobs, lowering of different devices, drinking fountains, doors.
Who uses the elevators? The kids?
Whoever needs to use the elevator. It will be accessible. In our other schools, the elevators are normally used by those who need that accessibility. They're not a regular use. I can tell you in this building, for instance, since we have breakfast in the classroom, all of the breakfasts probably will be brought up. Right now, we have people who carry the three flights of stairs breakfasts up to each of the classrooms. So that will be done by, in the elevator.
Now, how big's the elevator? How many people can put in there?
It's a regular, it's a full-size elevator. It's a regular...
Like the one out here?
It's either that size or a little bigger.
I'm in that one. There's no room.
I understand, Counsel. I understand.
Well, I guess, so what's the bottom cost for the city? 55 plus what? 5.5 million?
So currently, the only cost to the city is the difference there that you mentioned.
Yeah.
That is what's before you tonight. The rest of the phase, we need to come to you for. And at that point, it'll, we'll do the completed design work that needs to be done. And then that construction will start. My guess is that sometime in early 2020, mid-2020, we will come to you with that proposal and move forward with that so we can complete this project by the deadline of November of 2021.
So you're going to have a school up and running, pretty good condition for 8 million?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sahadi, how we paying? Green stamps?
Green stamps, Counselor. We will be paying through the debt service. So we'll be paying through the general fund operating budget.
We're not bonding?
We'll bond for it, yes.
We'll bond for it.
Right.
Long-term, short-term?
Well, short-term until the project's complete and then we'll go long-term based on whatever the interest rate is at that time. So assumedly, if the first part of the project is completed by 2020, it'll probably go long-term 2020, February of 2021. If this is completed by November of '21, that portion of it will probably go long-term in February of '22.
When you go to long-term, that goes every year when we pay $10 million?
It'll be included in the $10 million. So what's happening going forward, as we've discussed before, we've got a number of the schools that we are bonded for that will be coming off the list of debt service because we're at the completion of those. And we'll be adding new ones on, which include Tansy as well as this project here.
What's the debt service now? Where do we owe?
This particular year, we're just under $10 million for fiscal '20 excluding the debt service on the high school.
No, I mean the complete money that we owe. We take $10 million...
I don't have that in front of me. I can get that for you.
No, rough.
I don't have that. I don't even want to guess because we have water, sewer, a number of school projects as well as the general fund debt.
I don't want you to scare anybody, that's for sure.
And you don't want me to scare anybody.
But it certainly is a scary number.
It is.
With that, I'll support this and we'll hope for the best. Aye, yield.
Thank you, Counsel in seat six. Counselor Long.
I'm just amazed at these numbers. They're just, they're mind-boggling. But, so basically what we're doing is we're rehabbing this entire property except for the skeleton bones.
Yes.
And now, from the way I understand it, there's no bathrooms on any floors right now. It's all in the basement.
It's all in the basement. We do have single bathrooms, nurse's office. We may have a second single bathroom on that floor.
But that's it?
Yes. So this will provide bathrooms on every floor. And the basement will still have lodge, gang bathrooms. But the rest of the floors will have a suitable amount of bathrooms to stop people from being, you know, going up and down the stairs.
On the windows, is there a change in the design or you're going to keep the regular design that's on there now? Because those windows are massive.
Yeah. So there will be a blank spot on the top of the windows. So as it is now, there is a darkened-out top portion and then it will be the windows that currently exist. Today's standards, the windows don't open all the way. So they only can open six inches on these, on these all new buildings, including Durfee High School and any school building, Tansy also. If they are either push-out or pull-in, depending on which floor you're on, will determine whether or not that happens. So if these are one-over-one, then those windows will be, come straight up. If they are just a push-out window above the first floor, they will push out. On the first floor, they'll push in for ventilation.
Is there any design for the outside included here for recreational space?
There is not. We added a basketball court, a half-court, two years ago. There is not on this particular project with any outside area. They're using the basement.
The back area is school's parking?
The back area is no parking. So the back area we use for gym. We do have, in the wintertime, we allow people to park there when we know the students are not going out. But most of the time, that's a gym area.
Oh, so during the day when the kids are there, that's...
That's their area. That's their play area. And there's a playground on the back, yes.
It's always been a playground on the back.
Yes.
Aye, yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Motion to refer to full council for adoption? Motion to refer to full council for adoption has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item for discussion is the TIE agreement with Hanover Properties LLC, 439 Pine Street, Fall River. Counsel in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Mr. President, I for one got all my questions answered on this issue. So I'm prepared to, it's before, it's already on the agenda?
It's on our agenda today.
So it doesn't need to be referred?
Yep. It's item seven on our agenda, so it does not need a referral.
Okay. I'm prepared to support it.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Very good. Hearing none. No further discussion hearing. Next item on our agenda is a discussion regarding the TIF agreement for Hutchins Holdings LLC and Raw Seafoods LLC of 481 Current Road. Madam City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I've actually asked each of the applicants to join us here this evening so that if you have any questions of them, you're certainly free to ask them. These applications for these tax increment financing agreements will be before the state's Economic Advisory Coordinating Council on May 22nd, which is next week. So we are hopeful that we can answer all of your questions to receive approval of these this evening so that they can move forward for the May 22nd state meeting. Actually, Raw Seafoods and Hutchins Holding, which is the real estate entity, have two agreements before you this evening. I'll hit the highlights for you. And then certainly, Mr. Glass, who is the CFO, is here with us this evening and again would be happy to answer any of your questions. Raw Seafoods is an existing business within our industrial park. We're very pleased to have had them here for a number of years. The current agreement, they are actually going to be investing $2,450,000 approximately in their current manufacturing and processing facility at 481 Current Road. And they will be adding 10,000 square feet of additional manufacturing and processing space. The agreement requires that they retain currently, they have 226 employees at the facility. So they are required to retain those employees. And because of this new TIF agreement, they will be creating 25 new jobs. The abatement, which was unanimously approved by the TIF board, is a five-year agreement. 100% of the tax, the new tax, is abated in year one. 75% is abated in year two. And then it goes to 50% year three, 25% year four, and 10% in year five. In this particular case, the total value of the taxes to be abated, $71,939. And just a reminder, I'm sure the council is aware of this, but for anyone that may be watching, this abatement applies to just the new value added. So they continue to pay all of their existing real estate tax. This is only giving them some assistance on the new real estate tax that they would be paying based on this 10,000-square-foot addition. And at this point, Mr. Glass, would you like to add anything on your behalf?
No, thank you. It was a very, very good summary. First of all, I thank you for your consideration. The two owners of the business also regret that they could not be here this evening. They had scheduled things a couple of weeks in advance for this evening, so they would have been here. would've been here as owners of the business. We moved into Fall River from New Bedford in two thousand and six and built the facility in the, um, in the park. At that time, we, um, had fifty people, and currently, of the two twenty-six that was mentioned, and we look forward to growing that another twenty-five with this expansion. And appreciate your support if you so choose to do so.
Counselor on seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Well, I'm certainly prepared to, uh, support this. A little late to welcoming you, uh, but, you know, I, I am amazed, uh, every time I'm up in the industrial park to see the kind of growth that's happening there, not just your apostle, but, uh, many of, of the other apostles. So there certainly is a good dynamic that's going on there. I'm glad to see that you've seen, uh, the, uh, city of Fall River as being a good place to do business. The fact that you've come here from our sister city of New Bedford is a feather in the cap of our city, uh, efforts to bring you here, and particularly, your company's, uh, decision-makers to choose Fall River as a place to come, not only just to bring your business here, but to grow your business here. So, um, it certainly is, uh, a outstanding addition to our, um, economic development, and I appreciate very much your investment in, in our city and creating these additional new jobs, so continued success. Thank you. Ayew, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor on seat three, Counselor Kilby.
Echo the same sentiments. I think this is a very, very reasonable, uh, exchange, uh, between the city of Fall River and your business, you've been here for quite some time now, as Steve has said, and, um, I, I look at, uh, it's, it's a modest, uh, taxable sacrifice that the city's gonna be making and, uh, benefit of the new jobs. So, um, I'm sure that, uh, you'll follow up on your end of the deal, and, um, it's my pleasure to be supporting this. This is what I, I, I envision what TIFs really should be, uh, this type, um, existing businesses who invested in Fall River. Your company has grown, and, uh, we need to help you grow even more, so, ayew.
Thank you, Counselor on seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, can you take us through the process, Madam Administrator, in terms of how somebody goes about applying for a TIF in criteria purposes? Um, how, how we go ahead and issue? And the only reason I state that is just, I, I know we've got four TIFs before us, and every single contract's completely different and not really consistent, so I'm just kinda curious.
Certainly, Counselor. So, in this particular, um, case, well, and generally, uh, what happens is if a business is interested in doing an expansion, or even, in some cases, an acquisition within the community, um, they would send a letter to the mayor, certainly requesting, uh, for the opportunity to apply for, um, economic assistance and incentives within the local area. We, uh, now immediately put them in contact with the representative from the Mass Office of Business Development, because the state is, um, involved as a partner with us, either in providing tax credits, uh, as well for the business, or even with the reporting requirements, uh, that's all done through the Economic Advisory, uh, the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council. So, the applicant fills out the state application form. In this case, it was a, uh, local-only application. All of that is, uh, the information that's used as a basis for the TIF agreement. Uh, the document is, is then created. Uh, we do have the assessor's office take a look at what the actual estimated increased value of the assessment will be. Um, it's, it's not always dollar-for-dollar for the amount of money that the, um, the owner might be putting into the property, uh, but rather, what the increased assessed value will be, because that's the portion of it that we're gonna be abating. Uh, the Mass Office of Business Development does review the application. Um, they do have to get certificates of good standing and other documentation, uh, to support the application. Once the state is, is, um, satisfied that we have the necessary paperwork, then we move forward, um, to go to the TIF board to not only present, um, the agreement, but also to advise the TIF board if there are gonna be any state incentives as well provided. Um, we, we like, we do like to leverage when at all possible.
So how do we make the determination if it's a three-year or a five-year TIF and then percentages?
Actually, in, in this particular case with, um, Raw Seafoods, they had an existing, um, E-DIP, um, application and approval for item number two, which is the one right under that one, it's the, um, Ice Cube LLC. And in that particular case, they received, um, a TIF agreement and E-DIP assistance back in twenty sixteen. So what happened was, there was a schedule of abatement that was utilized at that particular point in time, so we simply allowed the same schedule, the one hundred seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, and in their case, the last one is ten, um, because that's the one that was in the twenty-six, twenty-sixteen agreement. And actually, for the Ice Cube LLC, we're actually, you're seeing again, a slight change in the agreement because we're amending the original, um, TIF agreement and simply updating it to reflect the new values that are gonna be created. Um, so, and again, we use the same, um, schedule, the five-year schedule, um, that was used in the twenty-sixteen agreement. So they have, the, um, abatement, if you will, or the, um, reduction is mirroring the twenty sixteen agreement, and we're using that schedule for that purpose. And I think I've answered your question.
Yes, so going forward, is that the schedule we're gonna be using? Because I know the other two are a hundred seventy-five, twenty-five?
Yeah, we.
I mean, I'm sorry, a hundred seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five?
Right, the last year is different. We've, we've been going with the twenty-five percent in, in the other two that are before you. Again, we only use the ten because that was the one that was approved in twenty sixteen and had been, so we wanted to mirror those, those same schedules.
Okay, uh, just, so just looking at the, um, item A, the Raw Seafoods?
Yes, I can get into the explanation on the next one whenever the council's ready for the overview.
So I'll, I'll just stay on this, the Raw Seafood one?
Certainly.
So, I will just say the second whereas, um, it just states two hundred and twenty-five full-time employees, and I think we made reference throughout the rest of the agreement, two twenty-six.
Two twenty-six, we're adding all the time.
Yeah, and then the, uh, creation, so they're gonna retain the two hundred and twenty-six full-time jobs, uh, the twenty-five new, uh, permanent full-time jobs. Do we have a rate of pay, or has that been provided in terms of what we're looking at for salaries, the type of jobs that are gonna be, um, I guess, created?
Sure. Um, yes, the application does list various, um, levels, uh, and it includes, uh, a, a general manager of the facility, which is a higher rate of pay. Uh, eight professionals, eleven skilled labors, and I don't like the term unskilled labor because everybody is skilled, but that's the, that's the, that's the, uh, category that we're asked to use, uh, five in that category.
So what would the average, um, so, general manager, average salary?
The average salary that we've put in the application is a hundred and fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm, skills?
For the, for the professional was sixty-five thousand, for the skilled is seventy-five thousand, for the unskilled is thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
Okay. That's good. Uh, so, just looking on page two, um, under the company's obligations, I just noticed that item number two, uh, was a little inconsistent with the, um, the other, uh, TIF agreements that we have before us. So here, it looks like, um, it's just an annual, uh, report.
That's correct, Counselor.
That will be submitted to, uh, the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council. So, but in the other, the other agreements, we have either quarterly, um, and/or, um, one of the other ones is upon request, so it's not even, uh, annual or quarterly, it's just if we request it. Uh, so, I'm just kinda curious as to why we're not consistent with the reporting.
Again, for the, there was a change in the state, um, regulation, you'll actually see, um, the addition of, uh, Mass General Law references, it was, um, changed recently. So the agreement, um, for Raw Seafoods is actually specific to Raw Seafoods, um, and they are now requiring annual reporting. Um, the previous, um, TIF agreement that is actually to Ice Cube, that was the amended version, at that time, we were requiring, uh, quarterly reporting, so we left that, we didn't want to amend that out of the existing application, but at the present time, um, it, the annual is what's required. We certainly could opt for a quarterly reporting moving forward if we so chose, but, uh, they're, they're simply requiring the annual report that goes to the EACC, as well as to the mayor and counsel, president.
So, General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifty-nine, is that the reporting? Is that what you're referencing?
Yes, it's in item number seven, I believe, Counselor.
Uh, yeah, I'm still on two, it just, because it, the paragraph just refers to the EACC, and then the last sentence says that "The company shall submit a report as required by General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifty-nine, uh, subsection VII to the Fall River City Clerk in..."
EACC, which is the state.
So is that the job creation report?
That's the annual, yes.
Okay.
And I believe there's other information they have to add, uh, if there were capital investments to the property, um, so that has to also be included in the report, as well as the job creation.
And then, uh, on, on number three, just, if the company fails to meet the obligation, um, again, this, this section's a little inconsistent throughout the other TIF agreements. This one specifically says that through the mayor, uh, we may take action to notify the EACC, to get them decertified.
Correct.
So, um, the other ones say that we will take action on them, but this one just says that we will notify the EACC, and so is, is there a different process? So the EACC is now taking over the enforcement of this?
The EACC is still collecting the reports and monitoring the compliance for us, that's, that's part of the service that the state provides to us. Um, and the mayor, you know, may take the action, um, to notify or request, actually, it's probably more to request the decertification, if the mayor chooses that he wants to move forward with that. Um, we have had circumstances where there may be, um, an explanation, it's a matter of, um, in one instance, we had previously, it was full-time versus part-time and full-time equivalents, and there was some, you know, um, conversation to clear up the issue. So the city does get involved with it, but the EACC simply reports based on the jobs that are, that are registered with them. But we do have the ability to discontinue the TIF agreement, um, either following the year when they fall out of compliance, or, um, there is a provision further down, if there's any kind of a default, we can actually call, you know, the value of the entire agreement.
So I guess, in terms of, I, I don't know, is this just a local? This is only local?
Yes.
So why wouldn't we just say "shall" take action to notify the EACC, um, as opposed to "may" take action? I mean, if, if a company fails to meet the obligation specified in the TIF agreement, I don't know why we'd wanna say "may."
Well, as I mentioned earlier, Counselor, there, there may be, if, if they simply provide, and again, we had another instance of this, if they simply report to us that these are the number of jobs that have been created, as an example, and the city looks at it, and in the particular case, uh, there was a matter of the employer reported, um, I guess they reported full-time, but they actually had full-time equivalents because of the fact that they had a lot of part-time assistance, somewhat seasonal business.
Yep.
So the, the issue is, it just gives the local community the opportunity to evaluate what might be, uh, perceived as non-compliance and make a decision as to whether or not they want to simply allow the employer to, you know, to correct or to make an exception. In that particular case, there were actually quite a few more employees, but they weren't all full-time, so, you know, there was a judgment based on the seasonality of the business. Again, this is the language that is now in the new, um, the new template, based on the Mass General Law changes that were instituted, so we've mirrored that.
So this is all the new?
Relatively new, yes, yeah.
Okay, and then, again, I, I, my, my only concern is that if somebody fails to meet the obligations, I, I think we should automatically notify the state, I mean, especially if they're getting a state incentive, tax incentive.
Well, again, the, the state is actually notifying the city if there's non-compliance, at least that's been the process.
Yeah, but it's, so, so number three says, if the company fails to meet the obligation specified in this section?
Right.
The city acting by it, and it should be its, mayor, may take action to notify the EACC.
About?
And/or request decertification of the project by the EACC.
Right, so, this, the city has the obligation to notify the EACC that it is in fact planning to take an action regarding the non-compliance and the request for decertification.
Yeah, I guess I just got caught up on the legal terms, right?
Understood.
So "may" versus "shall," I, I think it should be an automatic, not, maybe we'll consider it, uh, that's just my take on that.
Mm-huh.
Item number four, um, I found this one a little strange, so if the, so prior to taking any action, there, there would be notification to the, uh, company about the, to have the discussion to remedy the alleged defaults.
Yes.
And then we're giving the company sixty days to respond to our initial letter, which kinda seems a little absurd to me, that we would send a letter saying, hey, by the way, uh, you're not fulfilling your end of the, the agreement, we'll wait sixty days to hear back from you to figure out how you're gonna remedy that, uh, but then in another, I think there's one other TIF agreement here that we actually go to thirty days, which makes a little bit more sense to me. And then after the sixty days is a hundred and twenty days, um, written notice to remedy such the default. I, I just think the timeline is, I mean, because if you're getting a complaint and there's, and there's, uh, specific concerns, obviously, you know, obviously, it's gonna be time-sensitive, so I don't know that we would want any type of, uh, company to be taken sixty days to respond to us, when we, when we're looking for immediate responses, especially if elected officials are calling you for the TIF, or the media's calling you, and, um, our response is, okay, we, we've sent a notice, but we've got sixty days to hear back from them.
As I said, Counselor, these are the timelines.
We've seen it, we've seen it with, uh, A.J. Wright and, you know, the layoffs and all that other good stuff, and I, I know it just becomes a little bit of a concern for me, I just think sixty days is pretty extensive. Number five, uh, if the company plans to move from the property, the city shall be given thirty days advanced written notice. It doesn't say anything as to, uh, what happens if they don't give written notice. Um, it later might suggest that we may recapture some tax value, but, um, again, it's "may", and then it doesn't say if this is transferable. So if, if the company does plan to, uh, sell the property, is this TIF then transferred to the new owner?
No, Counselor, I'm, I'm gonna check on that transferability. It's not my understanding that it can be transferred without approval.
Because, again, and, and there's another one that is very, very specific that it can't be transferred?
Correct.
So, in this TIF agreement, it doesn't state that. And then the, the other question, just in terms of the language of the contract, was number seven, so, that paragraph, um, if you look at the last sentence, "The city's sole remedy for failure by the company to satisfy any of its respective obligations and conditions are set forth in paragraph B dash five."
Counselor, are you in, uh, which, are you in A or B? Eight A or B?
Eight A.
You're in A, I'm sorry, what, what number was it again?
Uh, page three, number seven. So the last sentence of that paragraph. "The city's sole remedy for failure by the company to satisfy any of its respective obligations and conditions are set forth in paragraph B, period five, comma, B, period five, and B, period six of this agreement." I'm, I'm assuming that B five is that one line that says, "If the company plans to move from the property, the city shall be given thirty days advanced written notice." That's not a, that's not a remedy?
Well, I think what number seven is trying to say is that our only option is, uh, to address the tax exemption, that we, that we have, we can make no other claims against them for their non-conformance or non-compliance.
I, I get that, but it's, it's referencing B point five twice, and then if, if I go to what I, what I think is B, B point five, which would be Section B, the company's obligations, item number five, are, one of the remedies would be, "If the company plans to move from the property, the city shall be given thirty days advanced written notice." That's not a remedy to the company not satisfying the obligation.
I'm sorry, Counselor, I'm not understanding your point.
So the sentence is saying, "The city's sole remedy for failure by the company's to satisfy any of its respective obligations and conditions are set forth." So, in paragraph B dash five, comma, B dash five again.
Which was the moving, which is probably a, a duplicate, all right? And then B six, right?
So, but B five, if, so if, if I need to look at what the remedy would be, right, the remedy would be how we fix it, and it's sending me to B five, and it's just telling me that the company has to give us thirty-day notice for moving.
I think what it's, what it's intending to do, and again, you may not be comfortable with the legal requirement, but it's, what it's suggesting here is that the city's only, uh, remedy, if you will, is regarding the tax exemption, and that's, should there be a problem or a default on number B five or B six, either one of those, seven is simply saying that, you know, our recourse, if you will, is limited to the tax exemption and no other. So that's simply confining the, the recourse, if you will, that the city would have, which would be relative to the tax exemption under the would be relative to the tax exemption under the agreement, which is in that first sentence.
So that's not making sense to me, but, so the city's sole remedy for failure by the company to satisfy any of its respective obligations and conditions, so the only remedy, the only way to fix the problem?
Is in B five and B six.
Is set forth in B five, so I should be able to go to B five and find out exactly what the remedy would be, and if I read B five, that's not a remedy. It says if the company plans to move from the property, the city shall be given thirty days advanced written notice. That doesn't help to fix the failure for the company to satisfy any of its obligations.
As I read this, the sentence, Counselor, it's saying that the city's sole remedy for failure to satisfy B five and B six is the tax, to revoke the tax exemption. I know you're not comfortable with the legalese of it, but again, it's, all seven is simply saying is that there's no other enforceable obligation that can be created or any other covenant against anything else to do with the company but for the tax exemption if five or six constitute the default.
Did legal review this?
Pardon me?
Did Judge Massey review this?
No, actually Attorney Thomas does these for us, and he actually drafted the document after referring to Mass. General Law. So I can certainly suggest that he review that language, you find it confusing, I could certainly check with him about it.
Okay. And then just in terms of the actual values, so you kind of hinted a little bit, so in this particular project, there's roughly $2.1 million in construction costs that are going to be associated, obviously, the 2.1 doesn't necessarily generate 2.1 in new value.
That's correct.
So I'm just curious, how do we make that determination?
So the assessors have a formula that they have to use when they're assessing value, and our assessor, Mr. Mello, actually went through the process of creating the actual assessment card based on the improvements that are going to be done. I believe he actually got a copy of the blueprints from your representative, and he actually went through and based on what was being constructed, he actually created the assessed value that you have before you. And bear in mind, this, these tables are guides, once the work is actually completed, the assessor will go back in and actually do a formal assessment, but based on the plans that he received on the proposed expansion, this was the assessed value that he came up with, which, as you can tell, is less than the amount that they're actually investing.
So when he comes up to roughly forty-two percent of the construction cost, so he, you're telling me he's received a copy of the?
Plans.
The construction plans?
Yes.
And then obviously throws that into the?
Yeah, and he has, he has the, his assessment, he has his process that he has to follow when assessing the value.
So then, I guess my other, my other question, just again, comes back to, you know, where we stand with criteria and I guess our philosophical opinions on these, on these TIF agreements, because it seems like all the TIF agreements that are coming before us, we're giving roughly fifty to fifty-two percent off on their future taxes, which I'm okay with if we're doing the development, but it, I guess, certain projects have more value than other projects, and it seems like the percentage is still the same. So, for instance, you know, Raw Sea Foods is going to maintain their 226 employees, have create an additional 25 new full-time jobs with significant salaries, right? And we don't have the other salary information for the other individuals, so I'm not sure exactly what those other jobs for the other tips are going to create. So we've got $2.1 million here in new value, or at least construction costs, $882,000, $882,000 in new assessed values, and 25 good-paying jobs that are going to be created, so we've got 50% reduction on some new added value to the taxes, and that's really, I guess, what my holdup is, when we're starting to analyze these other TIF agreements, that's pretty consistent, and there's less job creation, but potentially a little bit more construction costs, and I'd have to go back and see what the assessed value is, I don't know if it's similar, so how are we doing this from an administration standpoint to say, okay, this is, if you're creating this much value in additional taxes and you're creating this much in new full-time jobs and they're high-paying jobs, you get, you know, 50% of your, at least, investment money off in taxes versus, you know, maybe 30%. Have we had any conversations about that, just to be consistent? Because at this point, we're just, we're just giving 50% off of whatever new added value you bring, regardless of you, you're adding ten, ten jobs or two jobs and things of that nature, so I'm just kind of trying to figure out.
There is consideration, Counselor, to prior TIF agreements that are made. As I said, in this particular case, we use the same schedule that was approved in 2016. As you know, I believe you've served on the TIF board, the items come before the TIF board, they're certainly willing to amend and make alterations. We have had TIFs that go out much longer than five years, so again, the schedule is something that's discussed with the applicant.
But I guess I'm going back to the point that I, and I had the same concern that I had when I was on the TIF board, that there's no evaluation criteria, right? So we're really just, it's arbitrary, and to me, I think when we're putting this together and the city council's voting on it, we should have some type of evaluation criteria, right? Because we've got applications that are coming in constantly, and I think there are some projects that are more worthwhile, and I'm not suggesting that this isn't one of them, because I think this is a good one, but, you know, sometimes we've got local mom-and-pop stores that are coming, could be potentially coming before us that might not warrant a TIF, and sometimes there are, but maybe it's not at 50%, maybe it's at 20% or 10% reduction in your property value, you know, so I just think there's got to be some type of criteria when we're making the determination if we're going to start approving these TIFs, and I'm just curious as to if the TIF board has had any discussion whatsoever about putting together evaluation criteria, and quite frankly, I don't even know if the state has criteria that they might be able to send over to us that might help the TIF board assist on evaluating some of these projects.
We could, I can certainly suggest to the TIF board that they might want to consider some sort of formula or calculation. As you know, that's not something that's ever been in place, but it might help standardize it for the benefit of the council, and we can certainly check with the state. I would add additionally, though, that I think we're, we also consider the fact that in this particular case, Raw Sea Foods is an existing business within our industrial park, they've made a substantial commitment. So as opposed to a new business that might be coming into the city, so there are other qualitative factors that would influence the type of incentive that we might be willing to provide to them.
Right, and I guess just for this one, I mean, we're looking at, over the five years, $138,000 in new property tax, so the value of the local tax incentives comes out to just, just under 72,000, so that's 52%. I think it's, it's well worth it for this particular business. If I was the business, though, I would, I would, and I guess it would be a little bit difficult unless you start reviewing all the TIF agreements, but as one counselor, I mean, he's getting 10% off, or they're getting 10% off in year five, which I'm not opposed to, because that just means we're collecting more taxes earlier, but we've got another TIF agreement that's coming down that somebody's, I believe, only generating 10 positions, and they're getting 25% off their last year, right? So it just, it, you know, the consistency is not there, and I guess that's why it's important from my standpoint, just to have that value criteria in place, so.
Well, and to your point, Counselor, whenever you're ready, and when I get into the next one, which is also part of, you know, a subsidiary of Raw Sea Foods, Ice Cube, again, the percentages are similar, the abated value is actually higher, but that's because the real estate investment is that much higher, but they're creating fewer jobs. So I understand your point regarding perhaps some sort of a consistency, but typically what's driving a lot of this now is the value of the investment in the real estate. The job creation is important, but you're going to see in the next one that it's the value of the investment in the property and the expense to the owner to create the facility that's really driving the amount of the abatement, but they're adding that value as well in terms of the property increase and the assessed value.
Right, and the other piece, I think the TIFs are supposed to be incentives, right? So the other piece, and this is just a philosophical difference, I think we're, we're supposed to be utilizing TIFs to help get properties developed that would not otherwise get developed, right? Not properties that they know they're going to develop it, and they're looking for just a tax incentive, right? So that's just a philosophical difference from my standpoint.
That we will agree to differ, Counselor, I guess.
Because I think it's an incentive to try to get it developed, and we talked about the South Coast Marketplace, giving them a TIF makes sense, Ocean State Job Lot, who's going to be benefiting from the TIF that was given to the South Coast Marketplace, relocating to a new business, that doesn't necessarily, in my mind, warrant a TIF, because the TIF that we've provided to South Coast Marketplace did exactly what we wanted it to do and created development down in that, that section of the city, so that's just my philosophical difference on that.
But we also, Counselor, to the point, though, that, I mean, when they create that much additional value, and in this particular case, the increased assessed value, once the TIF goes away, they're paying real estate taxes on the full value of the added, so it's expanding the commercial base as well. The job creation is important and it's certainly valuable, but anytime we can expand our commercial tax base and increase that value, it has a long-term benefit.
I would agree, but I'd also make the argument if they didn't get the TIF, they'd still do exactly what they're doing now.
Well, but.
So that's, so we're giving away tax money for five years, and what I'm saying is, is in my minds, when we're looking at TIFs, I'm looking at a vacant building, especially a commercial building, that has been sitting there for 10, 15 years that has not been developed, or a block of the city that has been undeveloped for a very long time, and by providing a TIF to bring in a company that would be an anchor, an anchor tenant or anchor business in that community, in that part of the city that might help drive economic development is, in my mind, where we're going, and then also, obviously, job creation is another big factor in that, but I yield on this for now.
Thank you. Anything further? Consulancy seven, Counselor Palatier.
The long and the short, and the short is 21 million dollars, I mean, 2.1 million?
For the construction, yes.
For the construction, 25 jobs.
That's correct.
And the people got to understand, you know, a lot of times, I haven't objected one TIF, but I got people saying, well, you know, you're giving tax money away and all this stuff, but they don't realize you're spending that kind of money and putting people to work. So, you know, I always support it, I'm going to support this tonight, I have no problem, and the next one that comes up as well, and that's a short of it, and I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Harry, now, is there any more questions on item five A? Harry, now, item five B.
Okay, item five B, once again, is being provided to Hutchins Holding as the real estate entity, LLC, and also to Ice Cube LLC. Ice Cube is a storage facility that was actually developed back in, I think it was 2016, and it was constructed then, it's done extremely well, so Raw Sea Foods, again, through Ice Cube LLC, is going to be expending approximately $5 million to add 40,000 square feet of additional space to their cold storage facility at 421 Current Road. They'll be creating seven new jobs, retaining 23 jobs that they currently have, and the value of the real estate abatement over the five-year period is $253,087, and that is at the same schedule, 100% year one, 75% year two, 50% year three, 25 in year four, and 10% in year five. And in this particular case, as I referenced earlier, this is actually an amendment to the 2016 TIF agreement that was already provided, and you do have within your agreement, there is a schedule that shows a seven-year reduction because there are several years remaining on the original TIF, and the value that is before you is only for the addition that's being added now, the 40,000 square feet of additional space.
Thank you. Consulancy one, Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we did the, I guess, the new job creation, wasn't there, there used to be at least on the TIF, that would be a schedule of all the jobs, the type of jobs that were going to be created, plus the?
It's on the local application.
It is, can we just, in the future, just because I've got the same question, I'm just curious as to what the salary is going to be for the, for the positions, but if you have that, it'd just be easy to include that with the TIF?
In the Ice Cube one, it's not, it's not delineated in that level of detail, but I can say that the seven positions, because it's a public cold storage facility, it's warehouseman positions, and approximately those are going to be $40,000-plus positions.
Okay. And then, under A, item A, the company's obligation, number three, this reference, obviously, to the other TIF agreement, the company further agrees to continuously maintain the levels of the jobs created under the 2016 TIF. What, what was the job creations on those?
In our original TIF for the, for the Ice Cube, the commitment was 12 employees on a greenfield construction.
Okay.
We presently stand at 23. It was also linked to Raw Sea Foods because part of our justification in looking at various communities of where to put the cold storage facility, that we believe that there was a nice supply chain, like, the word's not coming to me, but there's nice synergy in our supply chain, so our customers, our suppliers of Raw Sea Foods would benefit the cold storage facility and vice versa. So our linkage is actually, we've committed to retain employees at Raw Sea Foods and Ice Cube in combination. At the time we did that, in 2016, our employment at Raw Sea Foods was 206, and as we said earlier today, 226 is where we currently stand. So we absolutely have a commitment towards growth in this community, and we want to keep the growth in this community.
So can I, can I just ask a question? So the, so you are still, it's not duplicating?
It's not duplicating.
Right, so they're two separate, so you're doing seven new positions in this agreement for Ice Cube?
That's correct.
Twenty-five in the other?
That's correct.
And then the 12 that you're meeting for the 2016 TIF, you said you were at 12, you're currently at 23?
We were at zero when we built, we committed to 12 positions.
And now you're at 23?
We're now at 23.
Is that, so is that seven in addition to the 23, or are you going to use that difference between the 12 and the 23?
No, that's correct, the seven will be in addition to the 23.
All right, and then just in item number three, the last sentence, again, and the language is, is a little bit different. So this agreement shall be revocable by the vote of the TIF board as provided, so that was never mentioned before, it was just stated that we could, I think the exact, wasn't a clawback, but a?
Yes.
Recapture clause?
Yes.
So we could recapture the assessment?
Mm-hmm.
But it makes no reference whatsoever to the, to the TIF board, so again, just from a consistency standpoint, is it the mayor that's going to be doing these recapturing clauses, or is it, is it the TIF board? I mean, because two separate?
It's, again, the new agreement and the new format provides that the mayor would make that decision. The eight B that you're looking at is the modified version, it's the amended, the 2016 version, and this was the language that was included in that agreement, so we were instructed not to do a new separate TIF agreement, but to simply modify the existing. So this is the one that was approved back in 2016 that's just being modified. So the language and the requirement has changed, Counselor.
Okay. And again, the, the reporting is just different, and then also on number seven, so it says the, and I guess it kind of explains, but jobs for Farover are still being?
Again, they were included as, as receiving notification on the original one, so we left that requirement there because it was part of the original agreement, but the same entities, the mayor, city council president, city clerk, and certainly the EACC is collecting the data, so you have?
So who made, who made the recommendation not to, not to update these, I guess, what's the reason?
Well, this?
And the only reason I say that is because technically, I mean, you know, Raw Sea Foods could potentially be in violation for not sending quarterly reports to jobs for Farover Inc., DVA, Farover Office of Economic Development, right? So I mean, they're no longer?
Well, that's why it was left in this agreement, Counselor, just for that reason, so there wouldn't be any default. This is the, eight B is the agreement?
But they don't exist anymore.
That was amended from 2016, so we didn't want to remove any of the requirements in 2016 because then might have created an issue of default. The eight A agreement is, is the new TIF format document, so.
But if we all, I guess if, if the city and the city council agreed to it, there wouldn't be, there's no reason to, I mean, if we're all in agreement, right? If you've got a company that's in agreement, you've got the city that's in agreement, it gets approved by the TIF board. But if we all, I guess, if the city and the city council agreed to it, there wouldn't be, there's no reason to, I mean, if we're all in agreement, right? If you've got a company that's in agreement, you've got the city that's in agreement, it gets approved by the TIF Board, approved by the city council, why would anybody have any issues with removing Jobs for Fall River when Jobs for Fall River, Inc. doesn't exist anymore?
Because it also goes to the state council, so we just weren't, we didn't want to do anything. The state approved, the EACC has to approve all of these. In fact, as I referenced earlier, this will be going up on May 22nd. So, we preserved as much of the original agreement. Obviously, if they don't exist, then they can't report to them, but they can certainly make an effort, I guess, if they chose to. But the requirement really does address all of the same entities that are involved in the new TIF format and the new, based on the changes to the general laws.
But if you're telling me that we're going to, we still have to submit this to the state for approval, why would we not just strike that out?
Again, Counsel, the state may, we were instructed to amend the 2016 agreement.
Yeah.
So, we amended it to include all of the new references to the master general law, to include the new requirement for the annual reporting, but we tried to preserve as much of the original agreement because we were not instructed to give them a new agreement, but simply to amend the 2016 agreement.
Right, and I agree with that, and I don't know that the state really cares who the reporting goes to as long as they receive reporting, I just...
Yeah, I'm not sure they do either, Counsel, but we didn't want to take the liberty of taking something out if it was in the original agreement.
Okay. And I didn't see any recapture language in this one. Or did I, was that, was that the, maybe I did, I'm sorry. Now, this is revocable. Okay. So, is revocable by the vote of the TIF, but there's no recapture, right? So...
What's, I'm sorry, what section you...
So, I went back to page two of the document, number three. Last sentence says, "This agreement shall be revocable by the vote of the TIF Board as provided." So, if they, if they are obviously in violation of default on any of the agreements, then we can pull back the TIF, but I didn't see anywhere in here that we have a recapture clause to recapture all the taxes that we've obviously allowed them to fall out. But there was language in that for the other agreement.
So, this was, this wouldn't have been in the original TIF language. I thought I did see it in here.
So, I think I had a minimum of this, just as one, Counsel.
It does, it's on the bottom, actually, Counsel, I just saw it. It's on number three, page four of eight. It's in a different location because, again, it was the original format, but it does say, number three, the last sentence there.
Okay, I do see it, yeah.
Yeah, so it is here. It's just in a different location.
Yeah. All right, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council on this? Hearing none. 5C, thank you very much. 5C is a TIF agreement for Group Teresa LLC and Alexandra's Boutique at 390 South Main Street, Fall River. And if you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Zach Leoni, 390 South Main Street.
All right, so we are very pleased to also offer this TIF agreement for your consideration. I'm sure most of you know Alexandra's Boutique. It has become a prominent fixture on our downtown area. So, Alexandra's Boutique and the real estate is held by Group Teresa LLC. They will be making a approximately $3.6 million investment, and that's through the acquisition of an adjacent property to their original location. And they will be creating 100 new jobs, retaining 150 jobs, and the total value of the, I'm sorry, I'm just...
That's the wrong one.
I'm very, I'm very sorry, that was the wrong one. My apologies. They're investing $2 million in the building that is located adjacent to them, and renovating 10,000 square feet, creating 15 new jobs, and also some additional part-time jobs that are not really captured within the local application, but they are included. And they'll be retaining 20 jobs at their current location. The schedule, 100% abatement in year one, 75% in year two, 50% in year three, 25% in year four, and 25% in year five. And the total value of the tax abatement, $67,379. Alexandra's has actually done a remarkable job on Main Street. I don't know if you've had the opportunity. Construction is still underway, and I do want to take this opportunity to alert the council to the fact that Zach Leoni has been instrumental in working with the city for the TDI district that we were awarded last year. And there was a requirement that there be a stakeholders group, that they get actively engaged in trying to develop our downtown, which was the objective of the TDI program. Zach worked very closely with some other members of the group, and they were part of the recent Taste of Fall River that was executed. He and his mother have made a tremendous investment in downtown, and we're very pleased to be able to offer this TIF agreement. I will tell you that in this particular case, Alexandra's Boutique is not eligible for tax credits at the state level, so, again, it's a local-only application, and that's because it is a retail establishment, and the state has a general policy that they do not offer the tax credits to retailers. We've actually been talking with them about reconsidering that in light of the fact that Alexandra's brings a huge amount of business volume into the state of Massachusetts because their bridal store is so successful that it's drawing from quite a long distance outside of Massachusetts. But at that point, Zach?
Yeah, I think most of you are probably familiar with the business. So, we moved to the new location at 372 South Main Street in 2013. We had about eight employees at that time. And during peak season, which is during our prom season this year, we had, we had 85 heads at our highest count. So, we're really excited to expand into the former Capitol Theater and to be able to offer a lot more jobs, you know, for people, both at the management level and just like, you know, like at a lower skilled level as well. And, you know, with the expansion, we're going to expand in the 372 location as well, which is not a part of this, but that will also add some more full-time jobs as we add more capacity for our bridal and bridesmaids business.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Counsel Akhara.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I would just like to commend Mr. Leoni and his mother and their company for doing some incredible work on Main Street. I don't recall any investment in my parallel when the Academy Building was reconstructed and turning it into the edifice that it is again, because it was, it's been there since the 1800s. But what the Leoni family has done to revitalize a section of downtown is really incredible. I was fortunate enough to be in the building for the grand opening, and I was just amazed at what that looks like, not only on the outside, but what it looks like on the inside. And the inventory there is incredible as well. So, and I was pleased to hear that this is really not a regional business, it's an East Coast business. There are people that see this place as the premier place to get designer clothing for not just weddings, but for proms and other special events. And I am particularly excited about the prospect, and I wonder if you might just touch on a little bit about what, if anything, your family intends to do as it relates to the theater. Fall River is a community that was rich in theatrical performing spaces through the years, with dozens of theaters throughout the center city, only basically maybe two or three that still remain behind the walls that people don't even know they exist, the Capitol being the premier theater, the Strand and the Flint being a second theater, and there is another theater in the north end of the city that is sleeping behind walls that people don't know that it even exists on Brightman Street. But what, if anything, do you see happening with that piece of your property within your walls?
Sure, so as a part of the construction process, we added a live load floor above where the formal balcony is. So, when you go into the building now, the first level of the theater is converted into a retail space, and then above that, we sort of just kind of sealed off the theater as it was. And as we recoup some money and try to figure out, you know, what the next steps are, you know, we're thinking about either converting it back into a smaller theater or making it some sort of event center, but definitely revitalizing, you know, what's left of the former Capitol Theater.
Great. Well, I'm confident that you'll do the right thing. You certainly have done the right thing with that building. It's a building that requires that you take a look at your windows when you're driving by just to see the changing artistry that goes on there in the building. So, you've really done a very dynamic thing in downtown Fall River, and to be commended, I'll be pleased to support this. And I do support this, understanding the hesitancy of the state to support retail establishments. There was a time when I was very adamantly opposed to retail establishments, and in fact, I voted against one that wanted to bring an auto pot store into the community, competing against our homegrown auto pot stores. I was opposed to the Market Basket investment in the market, not in the shopping center, but the market itself because there are so many local markets in the city that make investments and do it on their own without TIF agreements. And certainly, there are many dress shops that don't get TIF agreements. But I think that the uniqueness of this project is as much the uniqueness of your business, but also what you've done to revitalize a block of Fall River's downtown, and that's a very unique thing. So, I am willing to support this tonight. And thank you, Mr. Leoni, again, for your contributions.
Thank, yeah, thank you.
And to your mother as well.
We look to continue.
She's a dynamic behind the Leoni family. So, with that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you. Consulancy seven, Counsel Palatier.
Thank you. Many times I went by there, and I see all the wood hiding the backhoe. You actually had a backhoe in there, right?
We did, yeah.
And I says, "What's going on here? We've got a backhoe inside the building, digging for whatever you're doing, I guess, shoring it up or whatever." And I couldn't imagine what was going on, of course, I never asked. And, but the finished product is gorgeous, beautiful for the city of Fall River. And it's nice that you do business all over the place, and do you accommodate all women? I mean, just one size or plus size?
All, all shapes and sizes.
Yeah, just, just to know, you know? People like to know that, too.
All ages, shapes, sizes?
Because the...
Women, men?
I don't need no, you, men, you do, men, too?
If you want a dress, we'll sell it to you, so...
But you go by there, the dresses are beautiful, beautiful. So, good luck to you, and the people should come from all over the place and see your place. What is the closest place that's got something compared to you?
Yeah, to get a similar type of experience, you'd have to travel to like a Manhattan or a bigger city.
Yeah. You think you'd get some movie stars to come down?
That's the, that's the, that's the plan, so.
Yeah?
Pageants and maybe like a TV-type thing could be the next step.
Very good. You'll put us on the map, that's for sure.
Sure.
I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Consulancy one, Counsel Akhadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. You had mentioned that, so they didn't qualify for the state, but they're, I mean, that building had been abandoned for a while, so I'm sure they get a 10% state abandoned state tax credit, right?
Not, so, did you discuss that with Maria?
We, no, we, I haven't talked to Maria about that, no.
Okay, so we can certainly pursue that for...
Because I think Portugalia received the same thing because the building had sat...
We have used it previously, you're right, Counsel.
Right, so, I would just make sure that you're, if it's not too late, I mean, that's another 10% off your corporate taxes and things like that, so...
Sure, thank you.
Just in terms of this one, was this one approved by the TIF Board?
Pardon me, Counsel?
Was this one approved by the TIF Board already?
Yes.
So, was it part of, was there a separate meeting? Or was it, were they all done together at the same meeting?
They were, Counsel, yes.
I yield.
Thank you. Anything further on this item? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Next item is Special Tax Assessment, STA, for TIGR LLC, 502 Bedford Street, Fall River.
Mr. Marrow?
I just want to make, take a moment to let you know, I had the opportunity to tour this facility within the last 30 days, and I would probably venture to say that if people haven't been inside of this building, you are shocked to see the amount of work, the amount of people, the amount of fabric and fiber and technology and the incubators. It's absolutely, I was mind-blown, so I just wanted to mention that. Madam City Administrator, Mrs. Hadi?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. So, this is the fourth item that was approved by the TIF Board, and it is a special tax assessment, which I'll explain further after I give you the particulars. In this particular case, Mr. Marrow will be investing $3.6 million, and that included the acquisition of the building. And he will be creating a minimum of 100 new jobs and retaining 150 jobs, I guess is what we have now. And the total value of the abatement over five years, and again, their schedule, 100% abated in year one, 75% in year two, 50% in year three, 25% in year four, and 25% in year five. And the total value of that is $146,677. Now, this is what we refer to as a special tax assessment, as opposed to a TIF agreement, which is what you're accustomed to. This is actually the first special tax assessment that I am familiar with that the city would be awarding. And what the special tax assessment does is it actually creates an abatement of real estate tax on the base value of the property. You've heard me reference previously, typically what happens with a TIF agreement, you're abating the new value added, the new tax, real estate tax that's created based on investment in the property. In this particular case, the actual base real estate tax is being abated. And there were several reasons for that, not the least of which is Mr. Marrow's vision and technology innovation that he'll explain in just a moment. But additionally, this building was in the land court and was scheduled for foreclosure. Mr. Marrow and his brother actually purchased it through the bankruptcy court, and in conjunction with the payment for the price of the building, the city received $240,215 in back taxes, water, and sewer fees. And those were paid by Mr. Marrow to the city in order to clear up all of those outstanding obligations. And as many of you are aware, when a property comes into the possession of the city of Fall River, we're not always able to recoup any lost real estate, water, and sewer payments that were defaulted by a prior owner. In this particular case, we were made whole because of the arrangement that Mr. Marrow made with the bankruptcy court in purchasing the building. Consequently, Mr. Marrow is being provided with the special tax assessment. It did receive the unanimous approval of the TIF Board, and in addition to the fact that a building that was slated for foreclosure... has been resurrected and restored, as Mr. President has mentioned, there's also some very exciting job creation and innovation that's ongoing at the property. And I'd ask Mr. Charles Marrow to address that for you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. You guys work long hours. Marrow is a 180-year-old company. I won't let you in on the entire story, but our story since we came to Fall River is a 2008 story. So we came in 2008, we brought 20 of us to Fall River. And we, and since then, what we have done is we rebuilt a sewing machine company that manufactures sewing machines in this city and sells products to 87 countries around the world. We built a startup incubator and created startups inside of Marrow. And in 2016, we executed on a strategy to consolidate the sewing manufacturing jobs as best we could to begin building a company that would manufacture soft goods, which is what we call it, not apparel, but soft goods, and build technology into them. We had to make a very difficult decision over the last 20 months. Took 20 months to buy the building on Bedford Street, as to whether we were going to stay in Fall River. It was a difficult acquisition, to say the least. My brother and I decided somewhere towards the beginning of the process of buying the property on Bedford Street, that being in Fall River was an enormous strategic value for our company. And the workforce that is here, the knowledge capital that is here, the industry that's here, has an opportunity to evolve, and you can't do it anywhere else. I mean, you can't do it as well anywhere else. And so one of the reasons I'm sitting here is that we've decided to grow Marrow in Fall River. We've come up with a plan that takes a lot of what people have perceived as a declining, not perceived, it's been a declining industry for 30 years, to take the knowledge capital that has been left, which is enormous, and use it to pivot towards an industry that has a terrific opportunity for growth, while doing it in a stepwise process that creates and builds jobs now. And I'm very pleased to be able to tell you that over the last 18 months, we have built a workforce training program that has, with grant money from the Baker Administration, that's put people to work. It's one of the only, and now the largest, workforce training programs for the soft goods industry in the country. And we're doing it right here in Fall River. And we really, we think that the strategy of moving the knowledge capital that exists from an aging generation to a younger one, introducing technology into soft goods to look towards an industry that can be, where Fall River can be the center of innovation around something that we worked quite good at for a long period of time, and put a lot of people to work in the process. We think that that happens here, it happens now. And I'm very pleased that the city has worked with us to describe a tax abatement moving forward. I think that it is, in the context of all of the other things that we're working on, it sends a terrific signal to the state and to the federal government that the city of Fall River is investing in an industry that has a terrific opportunity for growth and puts a lot of people to work. And I really want to emphasize that. The capacity for our industry to scale, especially if we pivot it towards technology, impacts hundreds and hundreds of people. Reasonably sized projects by our industry standard put lots and lots of people to work. And we think these will be durable jobs. And we think that this is a terrific opportunity for there to be a transition and for there to be outside support. So this is very much, from my perspective, an opportunity to create a signal to the broader industry that Fall River is investing in, in something that it's very good at. And for us to look for broader partnerships that are worth a lot more than what Fall River is talking about spending. But we're very proud to be here, and I'm very humbled to be here. And this is a terrific place for us to grow what we're doing. And I look forward to working with everybody here.
Thank you very much. Anything from the council? Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara?
Mr. President, I'm happy that you made reference to your visit. I too have visited the Marrows' investment, the Pepperell Mill, is that not the name of the mill? The Pepperell Mill, very significant historic structure that the Marrow family, Owen, Charles, and their generations of Marrows that have invested in this industry. And, you know, I know that many of us, you know, talk about our love for Fall River, and sometimes we're ridiculed for using that word "love" and "Fall River" in a sentence. But there are so many of us that do love Fall River, but there are so many of us that, as evidenced by today's presentations, that invest in Fall River. They turn their love of Fall River into an investment. So whether it's the investment in our industrial park or the investment on South Main Street, or here, the investment on Bedford Street, they're creating jobs, they're revitalizing industry. To see the women, and it was predominantly a female workforce that you have, to see the women just so happy in your facility for being able to use their skill and to turn their skill into creative products that then people are wearing and consuming. Because probably throughout history, Fall River clothed America and Fall River draped America in curtains and the country certainly, and beyond the country. And so it's continuing. And I think all of us should be very proud of your investment, Mr. Marrow. I certainly am, not only because of the investment in your industry, but also your investment in a very historic industrial structure there on the corner of Bedford and Robeson Street. And I also want to give some kudos to the city administration because in the streetscape project, which has received not 100% accolades from all, but there really is a dynamic that's happening. And I commend the mayor for choosing as the next streetscape project Bedford Street from your building, Robeson Street, and Portagalia Marketplace, down into our center city. And then coupled with that, the city planner did show us a wonderful waterside park along Central Street that will really encompass all of Bedford Street right down to Battleship Cove. So there's some dynamic action that's going on, and I think all of us can be very excited and very proud of Fall River and its investors, and particularly the Marrow family. So thank you for your investment. And I'm ready to support this with great enthusiasm.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I appreciate you being here, and I support your innovative ideas. This one's a hot sell for me. This is a little bit different than a TIF, where we're giving incentives on new growth that's being added. What we're essentially doing is giving an incentive on current taxes, real estate taxes that are being provided, so essentially removing revenue from the city, okay? Where TIF, you have essentially a property that has been paying taxes. You capture a snapshot of how much they've paid that year, and then the increased value, the difference, is where you get your incremental financing from. I just, I think this opens up Pandora's Box, again, the criteria, what meets the criteria? When are we going to give this? There are a lot of companies in the city of Fall River that provide a lot of different businesses. And what's stopping any one of them coming back before us requesting this type of financing? To say that, okay, for the next five years, year one, we don't want to pay any real estate taxes. Year two, we want to pay only 25% of our real estate taxes. Year three, we'll pay 50% of our real estate taxes. Year four, we'll pay 75%. And then in year five, we'll get back to 100%. I just, to me, we've got to sell this process. I don't know, especially when we're dealing, when we're not only trying to build our economic development, and I understand that, but internally, we're dealing with a lot of needs that are going on from our various departments and services that we're providing to the community. To start then taking revenue away from the city does not make sense to me, okay? The new growth is revenue that we don't currently have, so we're not relying on that. But when you're relying on the revenue that we currently have and we start to do this, and granted, this is only $146,000 over the five years, but this is just one company. I think we opened up Pandora's Box. To me, I really need to be sold on this one.
All right. A few other considerations, Counselor. In talking with Mass Office of Business Development and even concurring with others, STA's, special tax assessments, while unique to the city of Fall River, are actually utilized across the state. And New Bedford, our sister city, has done a number of these. So while it is new to us, and for the reasons that you mentioned, it is something that is regularly used as a tool to create economic development in other areas throughout the state. The second consideration, as I referenced earlier, in this particular instance, there were a couple of factors that warranted us making this unique recommendation to you, at least unique for Fall River. Not the least of which was the fact that Mr. Marrow, as I mentioned earlier, did pay us $240,000 in back taxes and water and sewer fees. His abatement is $146,000, so...
That was taxes that's owed to the city, so it's not like it was a gift to the city. You purchased the property in land court, part of the judgment is to pay back the back taxes. If it didn't get paid back, the bank, we have first right to take the property.
And we would have had the property, and we would have had to dispose of the building. And we very likely may not have recovered the back tax... Oh, Counselor, we've been selling properties now for some time, and we, I mean, as much as we try...
That's fine, but I know the interest in this particular building.
Well, but again, I think the city in evaluating whether or not to move forward in this particular case, you know, was very much aware of the fact that we could have owned the mill had Mr. Marrow and his brother decided to move elsewhere, because it was a very long process for them to finally secure the building. And we very well could have owned the building. And whether or not we would have recovered $240,000 is highly suspect, especially when you look at, you know, the auctions that we've had and the properties we've disposed of. It's very often that we do not recapture the outstanding fees, so...
So just with that, though, can I ask, is the administration aware that there was other individuals interested in this property?
Yes, Counselor, yes.
Just what, I don't, that's not the point, and that's not where I'm trying to go. But again, I think the facts need to be stated. It's a little misleading to suggest that this is going to be the King Philip Mill or the police station, because that's not the case. And I know that full well that that wasn't going to be the case. So to say that we wouldn't recoup the 240 and that it's a gift... I'm glad we recouped the money. It's money that was owed to the city, okay? It's not that we provided every single service that every other commercial property or residential property was given, so.
Well, that's, I'm sorry, Mr. Marrow, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I would, I would. You know, I think that this is a complicated, this is a complicated thing. And to your point, there was interest in the building. That building, that building might have turned into apartments. There would have been a lot of people that would have lost their jobs if we didn't buy that building. And I want to go back two years, when we would have applied for a TIF had that building purchase been more organized and in a healthier process. We would have, we would have applied, we would have applied for a TIF for our growth in the building and what we were going to do here. But instead, we were forced to make a decision, and that was whether we were going to save a lot of jobs. And it didn't, it wasn't something that, the timing, it wasn't our timing that put us in the position where we needed to make that decision. But we did, and we stepped up, and we saved, we saved just about 70 jobs. And then we chose to keep the jobs here. And it was a very difficult decision to keep, to do that. There are amazing people that work there, and our support for them is absolutely unquestioned. But we chose to keep this here. And I think that, and I think that part of this process of looking, of looking towards, you know, I understand the broader question about how you define, about opening Pandora's Box and what you define as an applicable TIF is an important one. We did our homework, too. And other communities who work hard on economic development use this often as a lever to create growth and stimulate growth. But I think it's also, it's also very important to recognize that there's another piece of that, too. And that's that this is also, it's part of a broader narrative where this city, this city is working with businesses like ours to create more opportunities. That money, that money is going into people. It's going into, it's going into the city.
So I appreciate that, and I just really, I want to get back to the concept and not necessarily you, because it's not, my hesitation is not with your company or you purchasing of the property. It's the actual, again, the application of this particular agreement, just in general. And the reason I say that is because, you know, the cornerstone of any community really is small business, right? And I don't think the city does enough for small businesses. And we're just going to add another layer to the mom and pop stores who are struggling to continue to make sure that their businesses are maintaining. And we do not offer them, when they're struggling, to say, well, if you maintain that one job, which is their job and their livelihood, we're going to completely wipe out one year's worth of property tax, which could have a significant impact. And I understand you're generating 100 to 300 jobs. My question would be, is what is the criteria evaluation that we're going to be using for other applications coming forward? What is the implications to the revenue of the city over those five years? Because we're going to be talking about a number of individuals that are going to be looking to do this, if we're going to be consistent. The other piece I have to it is, I'm sure the, and I'm not sure, and I take that back. So I will ask, was, is the mill fully occupied? And if the mill was not fully occupied, why did we not do a TIF based on a snapshot of what the property looks like? And then the future build-out, which would obviously generate additional value on the property? Do you know what I'm saying? So if we have two floors that are vacant, the assessors is going in and saying, okay, we only have 75% or 25% of this building that's being occupied. We'll figure out a snapshot, and then we'll do a TIF on the additional 75 as you develop it, right? As opposed to completely wiping out all the property taxes that are coming in.
A couple of considerations, Counselor. Mr. Marrow is using it as a manufacturing facility, and we were not aware that immediately there was going to be that kind of capital investment. Again, that value added of assessment, that's usually what the TIF addresses. In his particular case, he's going to be operating it quite a bit, as is. I know he has some plans for the first level, but nothing of any of this consequence. Additionally, I do want to stress that we use this tool, and we've heard the expression "the tools in the toolbox." We use this tool, I believe, very sparingly. This is the first. And it is the first, not the least of which because of Mr. Marrow's commitment and the way he acquired the building. But because we honestly believe that Marrow Manufacturing and Mr. Marrow and his brother Owen are about to revolutionize textile manufacturing, not just even for Fall River.
That's wonderful, but we can't, we can't...
Counselor, if I could please finish, Counselor. I really would appreciate you not interrupting me. I think it's worth being said, this isn't just another business coming in doing exactly what businesses do. He is in deep conversations, and he can speak to that, with Mass Tech Collaborative to establish an entire innovation center on the second floor, third floor of the building, that again, is looking to revolutionize textile and soft goods, as he refers to it, manufacturing. It's an opportunity for us to recapture loss, a lost industry that has effectively gone overseas to China and India and wherever else. We have an ability to recapture that, to create something, to do production, which adds value within an economy, to bring additional value, not the least of which is the training. I guess when we looked at this, and I think the TIF Board concurred, there's a vision here and a promise for the establishment of a whole new industry. So it's not simply one job with profits to be made by one individual and/or a partner. It's an industry that we believe has tremendous potential for the community. And the thought that the history of this community was based on apparel and textile industry could somehow be recreated for today's modern economy and could be US-based, because we're the only ones that can do what Mr. Marrow's planning to do, because he's incorporating that technology into his soft goods, is a huge opportunity. So we looked at the special tax assessment. It was the tool that was available to us to assist him with this project. In this particular case, we feel that it was appropriately utilized. But I don't want to leave the impression, and I know this is a concern of yours, that this is going to open the floodgates for us to start offering special tax assessments to businesses who are coming through... to businesses who are coming through the door. That is not the intention. We, we consider this a specialized case. We think that it's, it's been earned and that it's something that is worthy of the city's contribution to what the Merrows are trying to accomplish. And you may disagree, but we'd like this opportunity to, to assist them.
So here's my issue. So again, this country was built on vision, right? So everybody has vision. Everybody in business has a vision to succeed. It's the American dream. I understand it's visionary in what he's doing. I'm not taking anything away from that, but there are a lot of people and a lot of businesses that can make that same very argument. My issue now becomes is this is the first time we've had this, something before us. Not once had we have any conversation with the administration before this city council or with the subcommittee on economic development to have the discussion as to whether or not we agree to something like this, what the implications are. We're just getting, this is given to us and by the way, this is the first time we're doing it. Here it is, you know, it's a little bit different, but other communities are doing this. Okay, so what's the evaluation criteria from other communities? How many of them are giving it out? What companies or what type of industries are they giving it to? You know, those are the types of questions I think we need to, to discuss and I'm still want to know why we never thought about if, if, is it fully occupied, the, the mill?
No, it's not, but it's mostly, it's almost fully occupied.
What, what would you say percentage-wise? Do we know off, off, what's the assessor have it? Is it 75?
I mean, we're, Marrow, Marrow takes up four fifths of the 255,000 square feet now.
So, so again, I'm just trying to, like, I'm all for private-public partnerships, but I, but I think we need to have, do our due diligence. And this isn't due diligence. This isn't the first time this agreement comes down before us for the first time in the city's history that we just sit here and, and say it's a great idea because it's a visionary idea, right? I, I, to me, it doesn't make sense. I think we need to do our due diligence. This is why the city council's here, but you know, we, we take votes on, on gut feelings and emotions and it, it sounds great, but I will tell you, I, and I, I leave it to my other colleagues. I mean, how many times have small businesses come before us complaining about the fees and the taxes that they have to pay? And we do nothing for them, right? We try to give them abatements, we try to assist them in, in services. You know, the, the individual, the mom and pop, the corner store, that's providing a job for one individual is just as important as a company like yourself that's coming in, providing 100 to 300 jobs. And I think we need to have that equity because we, because I know somebody's going to come in, that is providing a job for two people and they're going to want their taxes to be reduced for a year or two years or whatever the case may be and, and our response is going to be no. And then we're going to say, why are we saying no? Well, we don't have a, a criteria evaluation in place. We don't even know what it is. It's up to the TIF board and I don't even know what type of conversations were had with the TIF board in terms of this, prior to this happening. So I, I mean, I've got a lot of, a lot of concerns and issues, so...
If I can just jump in, because I do think, I think that on a personal level, you're, you're absolutely right and on a, on a macro or on, on microeconomic level, I don't think you're, I don't think you're correct. I think that adding, I think the jobs that we've added already create a level of economic activity at, in that part of the area that is different than if it were one or two jobs. I think adding 100 jobs creates an entirely different level of economic activity. It'll significantly impact Portogalia, it'll significantly impact the transportation that happens. We're talking to Joseph Abud about building a regional training center. That would involve us introducing new transportation to bring people from New Bedford to this building because that's a lot of people. Now, Marrow is, because Serta doesn't seem to have the capacity to do it, Marrow's contemplating investing in its own bus service to run people back and forth from New Bedford. So while I agree with you on the, on a personal level, I think anybody who is looking out for their employees and is building a business is going to have an interest in, in a tax abatement. I think we're talking about something that has a different scale, it has a different impact on this, on this community and it has certainly a different impact on the economy here. And Marrow is committed to not just what we're doing in our building, but what we're doing outside of the building. And it, and it does inform part of the larger projects in Fall River. I think the streetscape is an incredibly important thing that's going to happen in the city. I think it's going to create an artery that runs down to the waterfront and I think that we sit at the end of that and can participate in the development of, of, in, in economic growth down Bedford Street that will significantly inform what happens in Bedford Street. So respectfully, the, the, everyone, everyone does matter, but the, this, the economic impact of what we're doing is very different from, from adding one or two jobs here or there. And, and, and I don't, I don't know that that can be argued. I, I think that economically, that's just, that's just true and, and not, and not promises either. It's what we've done. I think what we've done has created a significant economic impact and, and whether we bring a brand-new industry to Fall River or we just work really hard to get there, we, we're already creating a significant economic impact and this just, this helps, this helps grow that.
Again, I'm, I'm all for private-public partnerships, for, you know, TIFs to incentivize. Again, I, how many, how many businesses do we have in the industrial park?
I couldn't tell you the exact number, Counselor.
Quite a few, right?
Oh, yes, certainly.
Employ a lot of individuals, okay? What's going to stop them, again, from coming here saying, we'll, we'll, we'll leave, we'll go somewhere else? If, if New Bedford is offering this, we'll go there. And then we're going to sit here and we're going to say, okay, now we're going to want to keep them, now we're going to, we're going to have five years of, of taxes either completely wiped off the books or reduced at some point, right? So, and again, have we looked, and I, I didn't get my response, if, if what he is suggesting and I don't know what's in, and what you're saying is occupied versus what's in the assessor's system might be completely two different things. So I'm curious, from the assessment standpoint, of the $1.7 million, how much of that is actually being considered occupied and not vacant?
Again, Mr. Mello did the assessed valuation based on his formula and he came up with the 1.7 million as the value on the property. I, I can't tell you, Counselor, if there were any other factors incorporated. I will tell you that in talking with Mr. Marrow, we were not aware that his building required a huge amount of capital investment in order for it to function as he envisions it. So again, when we go back to the TIF, the TIF is based on value added. He's purchased the building, that was his investment, but there is no imminent wholesale value-added plan for that building. So a TIF was not really the appropriate tool for us to utilize to assist him in what he's hoping to accomplish. A lot of what he's doing there is, is training and, and that doesn't require the same level of capital involvement as building a new building or expanding on to a manufacturing facility. He bought the building, that is his investment and so the TIF would not have been appropriate for him at this present point in time.
So I will, I will say to you, thank you for your investment in Fall River, please don't take it the wrong way. It's just long-term from a visionary standpoint, you know, and I won't belabor the point because I know I'll be the lone vote on this one, so I, I do think that internally, we, we really need to have conversations about the type of incentive programs that we need to be, that we want to have presented to the private sector, right? And I, I think that's a conversation not only from the administration, but the administration and the legislative body that has to approve this. I, I don't think this is how it transpires and again, I know where it's going, so congratulations and, but I won't be supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor, in seat seven, six, Council on Law.
I can appreciate Councilor in seat one's concerns, while they were somewhat some of my concerns, but in doing a review of this, as I, I do sit on that TIF board and looking at Marrow Manufacturing and what they've done, I think it's a little bit different and it was something to say that we had to do as point of economic development to say, okay, how do we do an incentive finance agreement with this company who has made incredible investment in the city of Fall River? And the administration came up with this, this tax plan, which I think is interesting. What's really interesting on this is when you have a conversation with Mr. Marrow, his business acumen, his vision, and when he talks about, he's not talking just pie in the sky stuff. He's talking serious job development, serious job skills, serious job, taking some people who have been here and have basically lost their ability to get the job that they were trained for, taking those people and converting them into working citizens again and then also training younger people to take those jobs as they go forward and in the, in the process of that, updating the job skills that are needed to, to provide it with, with computer-assisted and CADs and all kinds of different things that he's, he's implementing at his shop. I think it's tremendous. And one of the things, if you look at it, if you listen to the story, you know, he starts off with, how many employees did you start off with when you first came in?
Twenty.
Twenty. And then when was that, what year?
2008.
2008. So now we're at 2019, 2020, we're 12 years away. How many people have you employed since then?
Just about 150.
Another 150 people on top of that and how many are we talking about going forward?
We think, we think if we can get everybody trained, it's, it's 100 to 150 more in the...
That's, that's just unbelievable in that short period of time. I think it's, it's fantastic. I, it, it's fascinating to me. You've got a proven formula here and it's something that I, I don't think anybody was really thinking of. And you guys came up with a heck of a, heck of an idea and I don't know where it all started and where, where the birth of these things came, but I got to tell you something, I'm impressed and, and I'm not only impressed with the, the, with your facility and your ideas, but I'm very happy to say, you know, we've had a lot of criticism and I'm, you know, I was one of them, talking about economic development and that type of stuff, but for us to come up with this idea that is being done in other, other communities, I think congratulations goes to the administration. Hey, when you got to give it, you got to give it because I think it's, it's something that we have these conversations. I think it's well-deserved. I'm going to be supporting this and with that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council on this?
Harry, now I just, again, want to echo the same sentiments I had in the beginning. I, I had the opportunity, as did my colleague in seat three at separate times, that is, to tour this facility and I, I was absolutely impressed by everything it had to offer. I remember being in that facility of, on the real estate side a couple of years ago and it's been transformed in miraculous ways, even though this company does take a good part of the, of the facility up. It's impressive, it's impressive to see the work ethic of his employees, the work ethic of the business, so I'm going to be supporting this as well and wish this business nothing but, but the success. So anything further from the council on this?
Harry, none. Thank you very much, Mr. Marrow. Next item before us is the mayor and a communication for a proposed FY '20 budget for water and sewer enterprise funds. Adam, City Administrator, Mrs. Sahadi.
Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Furlan. Thank you, Mr. President. You do have before you the budgets for the water and sewer enterprise accounts. The net impact to the rates is a 10%, 10 cent increase in the water rate and a 10 cent increase in the sewer rate and we estimate that the average single-family home will pay an additional $10 per year. And as you're all well aware, a good portion of these increases continues to be our CSO, federally mandated infrastructure project to address our stormwater and also our capital investment for our water main relinement replacement that is ongoing as well. So clearly debt service is driving a big portion of the increases that you have before you. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. So to comply with local ordinance, the water and sewer fund budgets were submitted to you on April 1st, then on May 1st, the rate proposals have been submitted to you. So in the budget proposed for water is a budget for FY '20 of $13,367,976. That's a 6.5% increase over current year. For sewer, the proposed budget is $23,939,841 and that's a 6.2% increase over the current year. As noted, we have proposed a 10 cent rate increase for water and a 10 cent increase for sewer. So 10 cent on water will bring the rate from $3.14 per CCF to 3.24. That's a little over 3% increase. And for sewer, the proposed rate is to increase from $5.38 to $5.48 per CCF, 1.8% increase, but no proposed increases to the stormwater fee or the base meter fee. As noted, the average family increase will be $10.60 per year, which total to the average family that uses 109 gallons per day or 88 cents per month. Major increases noted for water, the debt is increased $600,000 and the, for water and the sewer debt is increased $920,000. Chemical bids last year came in much higher than anticipated, so the water chemical budget is increased by $80,000 and the sewer chemical budget is increased by $30,000. In the sewer budget, the 10-year contract for Veolia for operation of the wastewater treatment plant, 15 pump stations in all of our sewer and stormwater system, that's a 10-year fixed-rate budget that has an increase in the coming year of $250,000. Sludge budget, which since the incinerator shutdown, we are transporting out of town, is increasing by $24,000. To minimize the rate increases, we have utilized free cash available in both budgets and we are continuing our plan of putting aside $100,000 per enterprise fund to our stabilization funds. As you probably recall, four years ago, four or five years ago, I had proposed to do that at $100,000 a year. This will bring the water stabilization account up to $500,000 and the sewer stabilization account up to $500,000 as well. Our goal is to get those up to a million each over a 10-year period. So we're pleased with the budget proposal. We are working very hard to the continual compliance with the expanding regulations, the new applicability of the federal OSHA regulations on our staff and our staff has been developing very well and hopefully giving a good service to the city and we're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anything for Mr. Sullivan? Councilman in seat three, Councilor Kamara.
Well, Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Furlan, I, I do want to commend you certainly for the work you do and you do run a good water department. However, I, I've been less than an enthusiastic supporter of your budgets because of the significant increases through the years of water and sewer where now it seems as if our tax bills are being challenged by our water and sewer bills as being the most significant expenses for a household to maintain and it's, it's, it is becoming grit and some, for people with investment property, those, those invest, those costs inevitably get borne by the rent payers and I think it's not, it's not a secret to anyone that, that rent increases are having adverse effect on our city's stability in terms of increasing homelessness and, and all of the problems that come with that and, and, and so I'm not putting all of that certainly on the water and sewer department because it's just a piece of the puzzle, but I just wish I could see some, some significant savings in your department and, and less, less of a creation of a, another financial entity, empire, if you will, beyond the city government. You in essence are a government unto yourself, you have your own source of funding. We do increase our taxes by two and a half percent and then we increase our water and sewer fees by increases that in, in some cases go...
Point of information. Councilor in seat one, your point of information.
Yeah, we increase our tax rates and then reduce them for some people.
Councilor in seat three.
Well, we do appreciate commentary from my colleague in seat one. You can always interrupt, Counselor. But however, you know, the increases that we, that we face are, are having an adverse effect on, on our city's stability. So I will ask always that you go back and, and determine where you can reduce your budget. And again, you know, I, I think that taxes, people expect to pay taxes, people expect to pay increases in taxes, but when you have funds being set in addition to the increases we face on taxes, that that really, as far as I see it, is an end run around Proposition Two and a Half and therefore having an adverse effect to property owners and, and to renters. Just a couple of specifics I'd like to have addressed. An item on the second page, not the cover page, so I guess it's the first page, on the proposed community utilities budget, line item numbered 64507242528100, other rentals and leases. seven, two, four, two, five, two, eight, one hundred, other rentals and leases. The actual cost for eighteen was a thousand six hundred and twelve dollars, went to nineteen, a thousand seven hundred and twenty, and now proposed to twenty-five thousand, five sixty. So I guess that's about a two thousand percent increase on that line item. What is the significant increase for rentals?
So in, in the rentals, two items are normally carried there. Historically, it's been the rental cost for pipes that cross the rail in the city. We have to pay the rail entity a, a fee, and that's a relatively small portion. The other item and the direct reason for the increase there is the leases on the electric cars that we had subsidized by grant fund money. Those leases are coming to an end, and we're looking to purchase those vehicles. So that's the significant cost increase of one year to buy out the leases at the end of the third year.
Okay, and why can't those be purchased through city money rather than through water or sewer money?
Because they're water vehicles.
Who do you use those vehicles for?
So in the water department, one is utilized out of the water treatment plant for the lab person who by state regulation has to get samples throughout the entire city for bacteriological chlorine testing and analyzing. So he has to get through to twenty-two properties every week that are designated and approved by Mass D E P to collect samples, to bring them back to the lab to test, to make sure that the water is safe. The second is used in our distribution system and with our meter personnel to get to properties throughout the city.
So you have two?
Two in the water division, two in the sewer division.
Electric?
Yes.
Where do they, where do you plug them in?
So with the grant funds that were awarded by the state, the electrical charging stations were paid for fully by the state. The three years of leases of the vehicles were heavily subsidized by the state. So we've got a charging station at the wastewater treatment plant and one at the water department property.
Well, I'm not sure that the purchase of four vehicles, is that, does that represent the purchase of four vehicles?
That's two in water and a similar activity is happening in sewer.
Yeah, we're gonna see a similar increase on the sewer.
So that'll be a one-time purchase, and that account line item will be in both enterprise funds reduced back to the less than two thousand for the pipeline crossings across the rail in a number of places throughout the city.
And what's the anticipated life of these vehicles?
Hopefully seven to ten years. So we're in our third year right now.
So in three years, we'll be looking for another possible purchase or lease?
Generally, the lifetime of a vehicle is seven years, but in our industry, we often have to make them last ten to twenty years. So our staff often does a pretty good job of keeping those vehicles running.
Yeah, but, but there's certainly, there's certainly a cost that's going to be continuing to face us every-
Without question. Having vehicles to get our staff to the job sites, to the work sites, to the properties, you know, our dump trucks, our backhoes, vehicles to get throughout the city. You know, we have five hundred miles of pipe between water and sewer. We have lots of facilities that we have to get to on a daily basis to operate and maintain.
Okay, also, on the next page, item five, fourteen, six hundred, service out of rank. In twenty eighteen, was that twelve hundred and sixty-one dollars? This year, zero, and next year, four thousand six forty-four.
So we have one employee for this coming year that is gonna, is being trained in a senior engineering inspector position. So he is paying, being paid service out of rank at that proper rate of pay while he's being trained. Once at the end of his evaluation, if he meets all of criteria, then he'll be fully converted to that position, and that service out of rank would go back to zero, and in the following year, move up to the salary wage item.
Well, those are the two items that, at this time, I've seen. You know, my tendency is not to support this. I'll have to be convinced that it's worthy of support. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council?
Yes, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Anything further from the council? Harry, none. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Next item is a resolution with the administration obtained bids to present a plan to install a multi-level parking garage on the Third Street Garage. Madam City Administrator, I know it's been a long finance meeting, and you wanna give the council maybe a brief update on this, and if you wanna speak further at our next council meeting, I'll put that on this agenda item again, and maybe I'll table it after your brief update.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. President, and I think it would be helpful to give the council an update. I know when the resolution was initially suggested, we were just on the process of securing the parking garages in particular, and we were under an impression that we had some serious structural problems with the garages. So what has happened since that time is Mr. Gallagher has actually moved forward to have some core samples done, core testing done on the concrete within the facility, and this is specifically on Third Street, and has determined actually that the concrete is actually in good condition. The deterioration that we're seeing is primarily the result of water that the garage has been taking on over the years. So at the, at the present time, we are in the process of drafting specifications. Geisner Engineering is doing those specifications, and the plan is to put a rubber membrane over the entire top level of that Third Street Garage and effectively turn it into a roof, and then to complete any repairs on the lower levels of the garage such that we believe that we are gonna be able to preserve. Currently, there are a hundred and forty-seven spaces. We think after the repairs, we're gonna be able to open up a portion of that second level for an additional seventy-five. So we're hoping that we're gonna end up with about two hundred and twenty-two spaces once the repairs are completed. So in looking at it, and we are in the process of, of getting estimates, once the specifications are done, we'll be able to give you some estimates as to the cost to repair. But it does seem that the garage can be repaired and can be preserved. At one point, we were looking at utilizing the flat surface lot to consider constructing a garage there, and that was under the initial impression that we may have to move forward and demolish the existing structure, because it may not be cost beneficial to actually make the repairs. But we have determined that actually those repairs might be extremely viable and cost-effective. Additionally, there was an act passed in twenty eighteen, and we need to thank our legislative delegation for this. Included within the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, there was approval to provide that, and I'll read you the exact language from the legislation, that one million dollars shall be expended for the planning, design, and construction of a parking garage on the waterfront property in Fall River, and provided further that two million dollars shall be expended for the planning, design, and construction of a parking garage in the downtown area of Fall River. I've checked with Senator Rodriguez, and he inquired and determined that we can use it for facility repairs and improvements. We're not required to use it for new construction. So once we have the estimates secured for the repair to Third Street, we will be submitting them to the state D C A M, and they will be prepared to utilize the funds that have been set aside for parking garage in Fall River to complete those repairs, and we're hopeful that that money is in fact gonna be sufficient to address those repairs. Regarding Pearl Street, again, there are repairs to be done there. It's not in nearly the condition, the poor condition that Third Street was, so that'll be the next undertaking that we will secure. But both facilities are open. Pearl Street is freely, fully functional, and again, Third Street is closed, but we're hoping to address that very soon.
Madam City Administrator, I just wanted to point something out. The purpose of this resolution that I filed on this item specifically was the fact that I, I was interested in hearing more, and maybe I should've been a little bit more clear in the resolution with respect to the vacant parking lot that is across the street from the existing parking lot. I, in my mind, I anticipate that that being a utilized site for another level of parking, utilize what's there, very similar to what Mr. Cardero did, and very similar to what Prima Care has done on, on Pleasant Street for additional parking, since downtown has been a parking nightmare for many years, especially attorneys that go to the courthouse, et cetera. So I guess my, my intent for this resolution was specifically to look at ways that we could develop the vacant lot across the street from the Third Street Garage or Third Street Parking Lot, so that we could develop that for additional parking. And I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, Councilor in seat three indicated that it would be nice to maybe have some boutiques underneath a parking garage. So that was the purpose of this resolution. Is there any update on that?
I appreciate the clarification, Mr. President.
And thank you for the update. I mean, I think it was a valuable update. Don't get me wrong on the Third Street and Pearl Street.
No, I appreciate that. So I, I think what will, will happen then is we do have some preliminary estimates for the construction of a facility on that site. Unfortunately, Mr. Gallagher could not be here this evening, but he does have some estimates on that. What we were hoping to be able to do is to determine the value of the repairs on the existing garage, acknowledging the state funds that have been set aside for us, and then be able to address the cost and also the funding source should we move forward with construction of yet-
Fair enough.
-a second garage on that site. So we will certainly continue to move forward. We do have some preliminary numbers.
And it would be a good idea perhaps to reach out to Prima Care. I believe they own the facility right now.
We have done that, Council President. Yes, very good.
And maybe get some prices, because if, if the federal government's giving us two million dollars to possibly build a new facility, I think that would be very well used in building a new facility where our downtown lacks parking tremendously.
It might be helpful, Mr. President, to, I don't know if the council's so inclined, you, I mean, perhaps we could refer this to a committee, because I think we, we did look at the Prima Care facility. Those of you that have seen it, it's, it's kind of a bare-bones structural design, whereas the colleague in seat three was suggesting that we might utilize a first level for retail or some other function. I think that would necessitate a different type of construction if we were going to go down that road. So we do have options, and of course, everything will affect price depending upon what we decide to do. So I think it's definitely worth further conversation to try to determine exactly what the council envisions for that, and then we can set about determining the funding source to accomplish that.
Thank you.
But it is worthy of additional conversation, and we will continue along that vein regarding the vacant lot.
Yeah, thank you. And I mean, I specifically would like to see this stay in the committee on finance just because of the financial components, and the entire council serves on that committee.
Certainly.
So I just, for one, would love to see this stay in finance so we can go down this, this, this road. Constancy three, Councilor Kamara.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. And I do thank you for your referencing my interest. You know, I, I think all of us have been to other communities, and, and really, there's nothing that's more unappealing than to have a parking garage on any of our commercial main downtown streets. It's not safe, it's not attractive, and it certainly isn't income generating the way taxable businesses are income generated, not to mention what it can do to increase an interest in people coming downtown if there are shops that can be availed, even oddest kiosks that can be opened up, simple, simple kinds of rentals that might be seasonal even, focusing primarily on the summer visitors. I'm always amazed when I drive up Second Street to see the lines of people standing outside of Lizzie's, Lizzie Borden's old house. So that really is a major draw to that part of town. It'd be great if people could walk down Second Street into other places that are shops and, and things that would take their travel money, their tourist money, and let it, let it stay in Fall River. So I, I'm interested, and I think maybe the Council President is correct, keep this in finance, because I think we all have an interest in seeing where this goes. But I would be supportive of any kind of parking garage reconstruction on the existing garage, particularly downtown, or any new construction on the open flat land, as long as there was commercial shopping opportunities on, on the ground level, particularly along Borden Street, but also possibly along, I guess that would be Third Street, next to what used to be the old Lizzie's Restaurant. So I'll look forward to that, and I'll withhold questions until we get more information.
And I think it's, it's important to note as well, since we're gonna be, especially since we are remaining in finance and the funding, I do wanna commend Mrs. Ferrera and the parking department. They have been working extremely diligently, along with Mr. Gallagher from the Facilities Department. The kiosks are installed. Mrs. Ferrera has done an exceptional job of selling monthly parking passes and actually measuring the demand for parking in those areas, redirecting some long-term or monthly parks down at Pearl Street. So we fully expect that there is going to be a positive cash flow coming from the parking facilities that we've recently obtained. So clearly, that, that could be its own funding source for reinvestment in additional facilities of the type that you're suggesting. So we will pursue cost estimates for both options, one purely for parking and one incorporating retail on the first level.
Thank you.
Thank you. I yield, Mr.-
Motion to table?
So we have a motion to table?
Motion to table has been made by Council Stephen Kamara, seconded by Council Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adjourn finance? Motion to adjourn finance has been made by Council Long, seconded by Council Appellater. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'm gonna go right to full, full council. We have a very large agenda before us right now. For our city council committee, for our city council meeting, when I'll be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Joseph Kamara?
Here.
Stephen Kamara?
Here.
Kilby?
Lollie LeBeau?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Appellater?
Here.
Viveras?
Here.
President Ponti?
I don't know where my open meeting law, I have so much paper on my desk. I don't have a open meeting law. Oh, thank you. If everybody in the chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. Madam Clerk?
Council President.
Constancy five, Council Vice-
Could we take items twenty-seven and twenty-eight out of order? These gentlemen can go home.
Motion to take items twenty-seven and twenty-eight out of order has been made by Council Vice President LeBeau, seconded by Council of Viveras. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Council in seat one opposed. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk?
Item number twenty-seven is a request from Joseph McFadden, doing business as Our Place Shop, to operate and maintain a second-hand article store located at one fifty-six Tripp Street, and this has been denied by the police chief.
Is there a motion?
Question, and our last one has been denied by whom?
The police chief.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Motion to send to the Committee on Regulations.
Motion to refer to the Committee on Regulations has been made by Council Vice President LeBeau, seconded by Council Appellater. Discussion on the motion to refer, Council in seat three, Councilor Kamara.
Now, this item, or this issue of this space has also been referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Is that true?
Yes.
Or is it a different issue?
Separate issue. It's a separate issue that came as a result of a communication from a neighbor. The council felt it was a public safety issue, so that communication was referred to the Committee on Public, excuse me, Public Safety.
So, conceivably, we'll be having two discussions about this particular geography, this address.
The same location, but the communication that came in, I'm not certain who was operating the business at the time, but this is a new applicant.
Right. But I do recall that when the first issue came before us, there was an initial motion, as I recall, to send it to the Committee on Regulation, but it was decided that it was more a public safety issue at that time. I guess I'm just looking for some efficiency. It seems like these, the issues that surround the renewal of this license relate to both what was sent to Public Safety as well as what is being now considered to be sent to Regulation. I guess I partially don't mind since I'm not on either of those committees, so, but I would think that it would be beneficial just for efficiency to combine the conversation of both those committees onto one committee. So, I don't know.
Counselor, I mean, it's, if the council wants to do that, it's totally up to the council. I personally believe these are two separate items, two separate, not, even though it's the same issue, they're two separate items. What's before us right now is with respect to the public hearing that we had and a vote to be made for the license. There's another issue that has been brought to the council's attention with respect to a possible public safety issue. That will be heard before the Public Safety Committee. You know, should at that time, we want to invite the police chief or the Building Department, you can have that conversation in both committees. I personally believe that they are two separate items even though it's one item. I know it's a little confusing, though.
Fine, I have no objection, but I just thought it'd be more efficient to combine the conversation, but having two conversations is fine. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further on the referral, the Committee on Regulations, Counselor in Seat Seven, Counsel Appelletier?
I just feel that there's a lot of tension between both parties and to have them together at one meeting wouldn't be too good. So, we're better off with two separate meetings. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further? Counselor in Seat One, Counselor Skadim.
Police chief, give a reason as to his denial.
No, he simply notes that he denied the applicant listed.
Can I request if it's going to go to my Committee on Regulations that he provide a written documentation as to what the rejection was for? I yield.
Anything further on the referral, Counselor in Seat Three, Counselor Camara?
Just one last issue. In fact, if the applicant is withdrawing his application, then it would be moot to send it to Regulation. I guess, and in the heat of the moment, the applicant did say he was withdrawing his application. If in fact, Mr. McFadden has an intent to withdraw his application, he has time between now and the time that the Committee on Regulation meets to submit his withdrawal to the city clerk. Is there a particular process to the chair of clerk for someone to withdraw their application? Do they have to sign anything or?
I would suggest something in writing.
Something in writing. So, if Mr. McFadden in fact does not want to pursue this and wants to withdraw his application, he should just submit in writing a request to the city clerk, Second Floor of Government Center, indicating his intent to withdraw his application. And with that, I yield.
Thank you very much. Anything further on the referral? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 28?
And item number 28 is the Home Rule Petition, an act authorizing members of the Fall River Fire Department the ability to apply with the Fall River Retirement Board to purchase credible service for military service.
Move to adopt the order.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel Appelletier. Discussion, Counselor in Seat One, Counselor Skadim.
I think we should just, obviously, Mr. Burns was here and I think it just makes a little bit of sense for us to just refer it back to Corporation Counsel and see if we can make those amendments, get it on before the next agenda and then just approve based on conversations that Corporation Counsel has had. It's just my take. It doesn't make sense to send it up to the state, then resend another Home Rule Petition. So, if there's an appetite to get it, so it's for all veterans that are employed, that are currently employed with the City of Forver, then let's just do it. If the conversation comes back no, then we should keep it to the firefighters, then I'll support that. I just, you know, a six-year process, we're right there. I don't see why we can't just do our due diligence one more time and move on it. I yield.
Counselor in Seat Five, Counsel Vice President LeBeau?
Yeah, I think we'd rather have this go through unanimous, so I would support sending it to Corporation Counsel, having him speak about the two changes that were mentioned earlier and have it back before our next meeting.
So, is your motion to approve and refer to Corporation Counsel?
To refer.
Or you want to just refer the entire TIF? Refer the entire TIF package before? I'm sorry, the TIF, I'm sorry. Thinking TIF. Refer the entire Home Rule Petition to Corporation Counsel?
Yes.
Is that your motion?
Yep.
Motion to refer to Corporation Counsel has been made by Counsel Vice President LeBeau, seconded by Counsel Skadim. Discussion on the referral? Hearing none. Counselor in Seat One, Counselor Skadim.
Can I just drew you and to the clerk, can we just stay on the Corporation Counsel to get this on the next agenda?
And Madam Clerk, if you can just note that so we can make sure it gets on our agenda. Thank you very much. Motion to refer has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the, that the sum of $111,251 be in the same as hereby appropriated to the EMS capital from the EMS Stabilization Fund.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counsel Long.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Appelletier. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number two is the proposed loan order in the amount of $7,426,775 for repairs to the Samuel Watson Elementary School.
What item is that?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay, item two, I'm sorry. I just thought I was looking at.
I'm sorry.
You want to do the?
Item, yeah. Sorry.
That's okay. Long meeting.
Item two is the Phase 19 Water Systems Improvement Loan Order in the amount of $4,950,000.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to authorize to be published and refer to finance would be appropriate.
Motion to.
Motion to authorize, motion to publicize and refer to Committee on Finance has been made by Counsel Long, seconded by Counsel Stephen Camara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number three includes A and B. These are proposed ordinance modifications for the FY '20 Water and Sewer Rate submissions.
Move to refer to Ordinance Committee?
Motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinance has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I have a request from the mayor to amend the personnel ordinance for Water Maintenance Worker One, CDL Backhoe, and Water Quality Manager.
Move to refer to Ordinance Committee?
Motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinance has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And item five is also a proposed ordinance for the title of GIS Specialist.
Move to Ordinance Committee?
Motion to refer to the Ordinance Committee has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item six are requests from the mayor for orders of, excuse me, for land acquisition at Copacoot Road. There are three separate parcels, A, B, and C. Parcel number W-36-3, W-36-80, and 81.
Move acceptance of the communication and adoption of the orders.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number seven is a communication from the mayor and the tie agreement for Hannover Properties at 439 Pine Street.
Motion to approve.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counsel Long.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to take these items individually as 8A, 8B, and 8C and 8D, please.
Item 8A is the TIF agreement for Hutchins Holding LLC and Raw Seafood located at 481 Current Road.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt is made by Counsel Long, seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 8B is the TIF agreement for Hutchins Holding and Ice Cube LLC.
Move adoption of the agreement?
Motion to adopt is made by Counselor Stephen Camara.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Appelletier. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
8C is the TIF agreement for Group Teresa LLC and Alexandra's Boutique Incorporated.
Move adoption of the TIF?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And lastly, 8D is the special tax assessment for TIGIR LLC at 502 Bedford Street.
Move adoption, special tax assessment?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Counselor in Seat One opposed. The ayes have it.
Item number nine is a communication from the mayor in an order regarding a release of restrictions at 384 Third Street.
Move to accept the communication. Adopt the order.
Motion to adopt and confirm the order has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel of Viveras. Discussion, Counselor in Seat One, Counsel Skadim. Would you like to waive the rules and get the administration down or? Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counselor.
May I offer some information?
Pardon?
May I offer some information?
Sure, you're a part of information?
This is the old American Legion Hall, I believe it is, on Third Street, and it was used at one time by the city for voting purposes. It's been indicated that it's no longer needed, so they just want to take that lien off so the building can be free of the lien.
Thank you, Counselor. Is that satisfactory to you, Counselor, or would you like to waive the rules? Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counselor Skadim, seconded by Counsel Appelletier. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Your colleague in Seat Three actually summed it up at one point. All of the city entities were asked if they had any future use or any future need for this, and there was a consensus that there was none, none required.
What was the restriction?
That I'll have to check for you, Counselor. I know it was a use matter. The city had the right.
How'd the city get the right?
Release of restriction, yeah. Counsel, we'll have to, I wouldn't venture to guess this. I know that all of the departments were asked in any elections in particular if they had any need, and everybody said no, they were fine, and so that was the rationale, but how it came to be.
Election restriction?
Mr. President, I just talked before.
Yes, right. Yeah, an election said they had no interest in using the space for.
My apologies. Counselor in Seat One? You still have?
Thank you. So, this is just to remove the language that's, as stated, said land and buildings shall not be leased? Just for the election purposes?
That was what it was typically used for, yes. An election said they had no interest in utilizing that space for conducting elections again, so. I don't know how the restriction got there initially. That I couldn't tell you.
It'd probably be, there's some questions that, if you guys want to table this, I mean, it's totally up to the council.
The guy's trying to sell it.
Anything further from the council on this?
Just.
Counselor in Seat Three?
It just, it seems to me, this is a rather simple thing. They've struggled trying to maintain this building. I guess they now have an opportunity to sell it, and one of the restrictions on it, according to the communications we've received, is the one dated on May 2nd. The above property is being sold by the current owner to a private property, and then there was at some point some language that said it shall not be leased, alienated, granted or transferred in any manner without prior approval of the mayor and the city council. And then it goes on to indicate on the quick claim deed that there was a conveyance that resulted in the city having some opportunity to use that building rent-free for various purposes. It's never really been used for anything other than elections, but it's no longer now an appropriate space for elections. So, the private property owner wants to sell it, just they want it to be free of the restriction.
And as the Corporation Counsel mentions, absent some city need for the property, which we were unable to determine any need based on checking with department managers, so.
They sold it to the post for a dollar, but they put the restrictions. I'm good. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council on this? Hearing none. Thank you, Madam City Administrator. There's a motion on the table, Madam Clerk, to confirm?
To adopt the order.
To adopt the order has been made and seconded. By who? I don't have that written down.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I have the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Ann Rocket Spurling to serve as a member of the Library trustees.
Move adoption and confirmation?
Second.
Motion to adopt and confirm has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And we have the mayor's request for the confirmation of the reappointment of James Cockens to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Move adoption and confirmation?
Motion to adopt and confirm has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel Appelletier. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Counselor in Seat One opposed?
Motion to reconsider, number 10.
Motion to reconsider, item number 10, has been made by Counselor Skadim. Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Appelletier. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion for item 10?
Move to confirm the appointment of Ann Rocket?
Motion to confirm the appointment of Ann Rocket has been made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Consul on seat one opposed. The ayes have it.
We have the traffic commission making recommendations to amend the ordinances.
Motion to refer to ordinance would be appropriate.
Second.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 13 is the city planner notifying the council of the recommendation of the planning board, which was not to accept Brookside Street extending from Highland Avenue to the Dead End.
It's probably either appropriate to accept and place on file and give this item leave to withdraw, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Motion to give the item leave to withdraw?
Yep.
No? Motion to, is that the motion? Hearing no. Second to the motion?
Second.
Motion to take the item leave. Motion to give the item leave to withdraw has been and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consul on seat five opposed.
This is an issue I've been working on.
The ayes have it.
Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider, item number 13, has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by? You can't.
Second.
You need a second.
I second. No.
Pam can't second, as she was in the.
Seconds.
Seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion?
Can we send this to either the committee on, be it public works or real estate? This is Brookside Street that the council clerk and I were both working on. It's on our list of unaccepted streets. It's the, the people that had reached out to us before the holidays, the woman has cystic fibrosis, they were trying to get the street accepted so that they could have all of their ambulances, nurses, and such come down the street. What the planner has found is that even though it's a street with a street sign and everything, that nobody appears to own the street. That they, the communication was that there is no evidence that a right-of-way even exists, but I don't think that was an appropriate way to just leave it for the people that reside on the street because they're driving over something.
Want to refer to public work and transportation?
Public works and transportation.
Motion to refer to the items, the public works and transportation, has been made by Counsel Vice President LaBeau, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Discussion on the referral. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 14 is the planning board's recommendation of the wind energy facilities zoning bylaw amendment.
Sir, motion to refer to the committee on ordinance and legislation.
So be it.
Motion to refer to the committee on ordinance and legislation has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And item 15 is the planning board's recommendation on the zoning amendment for kennels.
Be appropriate to refer to the ordinance committee as well?
So be it.
Motion to refer to the committee on ordinance and legislation has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counsel Vice President LaBeau. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on April 23rd unanimously voted to recommend the accompanying resolution be referred to the committee on economic development and tourism. This was the resolution regarding the electrical needs at the gates of the city.
Move to adopt the committee's report?
Motion to adopt the committee's report has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Public Works and Transportation, at a meeting held on May 6th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying order be adopted. Just, this is the, was a curb removal for Robert Ford and Carrie Jarabek at 1030 High Street. Just to be clear, the committee's order that they are presenting is denial of the request.
Move to adopt the committee's recommendation.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Public Works and Transportation, at a meeting held on May 6th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying order be adopted. This is a curb removal for Carl Machado Trustee at 205 High Street.
Move to adopt the committee's recommendation.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on May 7th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained. These are handicap parking amendments.
Move adoption, the emergency preamble?
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
On adoption of the emergency preamble, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara, Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby, Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President.
Yes. Motion to pass through all readings?
So be it.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on May 7th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to pass through first reading?
Move some.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on May 7th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is the commercial waterways fee.
Move to pass through first reading and refer back to ordinance committee?
Motion to refer, motion to pass through first reading and refer to the ordinance committee has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on May 7th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is the vacant building registration and fee.
Move to adopt.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 23 is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Move adoption, second reading and enrollment?
Motion to pass through second reading, motion to adopt second reading and enrollment has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And item number 24 is also an ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment, and it relates to the salary of the accreditation coordinator.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas the streetscape projects are now complete for Purchase Street and East Main Street, and whereas there were significant delays and possible cost overruns with both of these projects, now therefore be resolved that the committee on finance convene with the administration, director of financial services, city engineer, administrative community utilities, and the city planner to review all contracts, change orders, oversight committee recommendations, lists of oversight committee members, and dates of oversight committee meetings, and be it further resolved that copies of all documents be provided to the city council as soon as possible to review prior to the meeting of the committee on finance.
Is there a motion? Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt is made by Counsel Vice President LaBeau, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have an order granting permission to Massachusetts Electric Company in Verizon, New England for one jointly owned pole relocation on Dundee Street.
Move to adopt the order?
Motion to adopt is made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The police chief's report?
Motion to adopt. The police chief's report would be appropriate, has been made by? Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have an application for the transfer of an auto repair shop located at 1101 North Main Street from Michael Kamara to Basam Yunus Best Gas Incorporated.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt is made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counsel Vice President LaBeau. Discussion. Consul on seat five, Counsel Vice President LaBeau.
Is this just for the repair shop license, nothing at all for the gas station itself?
Madam Clerk?
Just the repair shop.
Just the auto repair license?
This is the gas station that's?
At the corner of North Main and.
Right at the Morton School by the basketball courts there?
Yes.
Has there been anything for the gas station, or just?
They have. I believe they have a current permit for storage there that they have maintained, and they have maintained this repair shop as well.
Could you find out about the current storage?
The storage?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything further? Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Consul on seat three opposed?
Aye.
Ayes? The ayes have it. Consul on seat three is not opposed.
I would say nay if I was opposed, unlike my colleague on seat one.
Next order of business.
Have a number of claims?
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a number of drain layer licenses?
Take them on.
Motion to approve all drain layer licenses has been made by Counselor Pelletier, which is A through P, seconded by Counselor Long.
Q.
Q, sorry. Q. And seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 33 is a communication from the Mass School Building Authority regarding the BMC Derby High School project. This was actually in response to a letter received through the ordinance committee, so I might suggest that this be referred back to the ordinance committee.
Motion to refer to ordinance would be appropriate. Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 34 is a communication from a city business owner regarding capping the licenses for tobacco resale.
Would you like to refer to this committee on ordinance? I think it'd be proper to perhaps hear that, or you can accept and place it on file.
So be it. Move to ordinance?
Motion to refer to the committee on ordinance has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by?
Gonna get a record tonight.
Seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have minutes of the planning board for March 26th.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by?
So move.
Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Minutes of the zoning board of appeals for March 21st.
Motion to accept, place on file.
Motion to accept, place on file has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have minutes of the committee on finance from March 19th.
Is there a motion to take items 37 through 43 together?
So move. No, I'd like 39 separate.
Okay, so let's take items 37. Madam Clerk, reintroduce that item, please.
Item 37 is the meeting of the committee on finance on March 19th.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 38 is a joint meeting of the city council and school committee held on March 19th.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by? Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 39 is the regular meeting of the city council held on March 19th.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counsel Vice President LaBeau. Discussion. Consul on seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Counsel President, you know that I was gonna bring this up at some point?
Yeah, sure.
You know, I do think that we need to make a correction or decide what our policy is, but I've had a discussion with Corporation Council, with the former chairman of the Charter Commission, with the city clerk, and the issue at hand is that there was a motion, and it's item number nine, under resolutions, and it was a resolution that I had submitted concerning the fall of a task force reviewing the recall process and report findings back to the city council. The motion was made and seconded, and then it was voted four to three, four to three, four yays, three nays, to adopt the resolution. From all that I have determined from a review of Cushing's Manual, that if there's a quorum, unless so otherwise stated, a majority vote passes. It's not defeated. The only time a five vote is required is in the passage of an ordinance. So this was not the passage of an ordinance, this was a passage of a resolution. So I would ask that the minutes be corrected to indicate that the four yays and the three nays results in passage of the motion. And not that it's a big issue, because frankly, the task force doesn't even want to talk about this issue, but I do think that if this council wants to live by majority rule on any vote where a quorum exists, then we should have the minutes so stated so that we're not setting a precedent that majority votes don't pass unless there's a five vote in the affirmative. So unless the president wants to reverse his decision and just indicate that this did in fact pass, with the understanding that in all probability it would not result in any, I don't know if there's some concern about the task force coming back with a recommendation that might not be agreeable to the council, but even if it did, the council would have the right to overrule any decision that might be made. When I, just to close, when I first submitted this, there was certainly controversy on the recall election, and there was some concern that maybe we ought to take a look at the recall process and, you know, maybe increase the number of signatures required to get a recall started, or maybe there would be a requirement that a candidate that was defeated in the recall process could not be a candidate for reelection. I mean, those things might be written into the charter, but I wouldn't want to undertake that as part of the fall of a task force responsibility, because we're just really looking at a city manager form of government as a possible recommendation. I don't want to open up the can of worms about all the issues that surround recall, but I do think that a four to three vote ought to be considered passing a motion, rather than burdening any future votes of this council to the requirement that there be a five. There is an example today. We have seven of us that are here right now. If we had a vote four to three, I think most would agree that that should say, "We passed it," because that's the rules of Cushing's Manual, that's the rules of our charter, that's the rules of Robert's Rules of Order, it's the rules of every organization I've ever known, that if a majority, if a quorum is present, a majority rules. The only exception, as I said, on our charter is that there is, there are five votes required to pass an ordinance, not to pass a simple resolution or any other kind of motion, so.
Madam Clerk, could you want to weigh in on your thoughts on this, and your, Consul on seat three indicated he had a discussion with you about this, and I haven't had any discussions about it with you, so have you had any discussions with him about this specifically?
I have had discussions with him on this. We did, we disagreed based on, I suppose, prior past practice of the council, but I do understand where he's coming from, and I have read that section in the charter that does relate to five votes being required for an ordinance, and I believe it's an order as well.
And this, do you, do you recall, Madam Clerk, if this item specifically was an order or an ordinance, or was it just a resolution?
It was a resolution.
It was a resolution?
Yes.
So. I guess my question is, because I haven't had this before us before, if we were to amend the minutes of a meeting, how do we go about doing that? Because in the minutes, it does state that two councils are absent and not voting, and the motion failed to carry. So I will say that that night, when I did rule on this item specifically, I did have the charter before me, and I did base my opinion and my decision at that time because I had the charter before me, and I, you know, there's so much confusion in the charter, it's unbelievable, but that's regardless. If we were to amend these minutes, Madam Clerk, to say that the motion did pass, because it's not, it's not a order, and it's also not a, an ordinance, how would we go about doing that?
It suggests you can amend the minutes right now. You can amend the minutes on the floor, and then the item itself should then be acted upon appropriately. And so the motion on the floor that evening was to send this off to the task force for them to explore.
Okay, so.
President, may I help?
Sure.
I would suggest, and I would make this motion, move to amend, or to correct the minutes, to read that four yays, three nays, to adopt the resolution, and then the final sentence being, "The motion carried."
Fair enough.
Drop "failed to carry" and just say, "The motion carried."
Motion carried. That's a motion has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion on that. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I'm opposed.
Consul on seat six is opposed.
And item number 40, minutes of the regular meeting of the city council held on April 11th.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 41, our minutes of the city council public hearings held on April 23rd.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, just a point of information. Madam Clerk, I know we motioned to correct. Do we need to adopt as corrected on that?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, you should approve them as amended.
So.
Motion to, going back.
Move to adopt the item number 39 as corrected.
Motion to adopt as corrected has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consul on seat six opposed. The ayes have it.
Item number.
Motion to take item 42 and 43 together?
So move.
Motion to take items 42 and 43 after reading has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk?
42 is a communication from National Grid regarding the 2019 approved yearly operational plan, and item number 43 is a notice of casualty and loss to a building at 55 Judge Street.